The regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for December 18, 2019. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to fill out a speaker's card and file it with the Secretary, Sherry. And if you have the desire to speak on something that is not on the agenda, use the same card, the little green card out in the lobby. And you should state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments should be directed to the commission, not the audience or the staff. And while Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and obey the orders of the chair.
Bob, what item? What item?
ADU. I should have two, one for open and one for ADU.
All right. Sherry, can we have a roll call?
Chair Quilisi?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioners Powers?
Here.
Corbin?
Here.
Lottis?
Here.
All right. Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Corbin, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is Public Communications. Time set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business not on the regular scheduled agenda. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, the commission can take no action at this meeting. I have one card. Ben Werner, please come up.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. I'm here, of course, to speak about the Sustainable Living Research Initiative. I've spoken to the Ojai Planning Commission on a couple of occasions in the context of an invited talk about the SLRI. And after developing the conversation with Ojai for two or three years now, we're at the point now where there is an actual opportunity potentially to, for the city to implement, begin to implement the SLRI. Specifically, there is a grant opportunity called the California Resilience Challenge. And grants are due February 7th of next year, which is right around the corner, of course. If the city of Ojai is going to decide to implement an SLRI pilot program, there's a pretty, excuse me, specific sequence of things that, to my understanding, need to happen. Primarily framed around a decision by City Council to adopt a memorandum of understanding to apply for funding to implement the SLRI. There are two City Council hearings between now and the due date for this grant, one on January 14th and another on January 28th. My understanding is that if this is going to happen, this will require both of those hearings, the first on the 14th, which is a joint hearing with your commission, to agendize a decision on an MOU, which would then be presumably decided on the 28th of January. So, two council members, council members Wyrick and Vrenchina have requested that the discussion item of consideration of an MOU be placed on your joint hearing on the 14th. And the reason I'm here speaking to you tonight is that it will be up to your commission, presumably, tonight to agree to have that item on your joint hearing on the 14th. So I just wanted to connect with you for a moment and frame that, and also to distribute printouts to your commission of a brief on the SLRI, and with the request that, given this sort of last opportunity, at least given my availability to serve in this regard as a consultant, that you take the time to read this, and I've written my contact information on here, and to please, between now and the 14th, presuming you agree to this item on the agenda for the 14th, to please contact me if you have any questions. It's my request that you are well-informed and have a clear opinion on it. And I would love to have the opportunity to address any concerns that you have directly, either on the phone or in person, and to answer your questions. So with that, I'll distribute these.
Thank you. For clarification, if the 14th of January is in fact a joint meeting with the City Council, I think it is, it's one of our periodic meetings, that is a separate meeting from the City Council meeting?
I don't fully know the answer to that question.
No.
Yes, it is.
I'm telling you, not asking. Yeah. That, it, we get together with the City Council periodically through the year to talk about what should we be doing. But that's not a meeting at which there's an agenda, on which votes are taken that have, that have an impact on what the city does, per se. The meeting later on the 14th, the regular City Council meeting, could be one of those. So.
Understood. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else wishing to speak during Public Communications? All right, then we'll move on to our consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, December 4th. Did anyone have any adds or changes to the minutes? If not?
I don't see any questions, so I will go ahead and make a motion that we adopt
Approved.
Or, excuse me, approve the Planning Commission minutes from December 4th, 2019. A second.
Very good. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, Sherry?
Powers?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Moving on to Item 2, our continued discussion of the ADU section of the municipal code, accessory dwelling units text amendment TA 19-07. And could we hear from staff? Is there anything that you want to add beyond what we talked about last meeting?
Briefly, a couple of points we'll cover. Most of it, of course, in the staff report and in the revised ordinance. The first brief point would be, in terms of the revised ordinance, I'll go over a couple of sections that were changed. Obviously, you've read it, so every single little picky and change is present in the document, but a couple of high points to review. And I think we can just go perhaps through the ordinance in order. So if we, we're looking at Exhibit A to Attachment A, which is the ordinance itself on exhibit to the resolution you could adopt tonight, recommending said amendment to the council. Here, we've added a definition of multifamily dwelling that wasn't previously present. I'm on page three, that is, of attachment, Exhibit A to Attachment A. The definition we proposed to add is exact same as is currently in the code. We just cite back to it. And if you don't have your full code handy, that definition defines multifamily dwelling as a building, a portion of a building, designed for residents for two or more families, living independently of each other, because it, and senior citizen multifamily housing. Our read of that is that what it includes is a typical apartment complex, a condo complex, something like that. It also would include independent senior living facilities where you have independent apartments. But it wouldn't include a nursing facility or an assisted living facility because those aren't independent living units. They're operated as a collective facility. And that's also expressly excluded in the current definition for, elsewhere in the code, for assisted living facilities and medical services. So nursing homes or like a memory care type place where you both live and are receiving non-medical services is not a multifamily dwelling, and thus isn't going to get an ADU under these standards. On the next one, turning to the table, Table A, we've made a couple of changes in the table worth mentioning. One is, after some extensive discussion on staff's side, we recommend not allowing PL, leaving it as the current set of zones, all R zones, OSA, VMU, and then C1 and BP if there's an existing legal single-family residence, not for those few existing illegal single-family residences. The reasoning why we recommend doing this is that the current policy choices reflect a recognition that PL is something different and needs to be preserved as something different. And our recommendation is in this ordinance, which is really a compliance document, let's preserve the current, our staff's recommendation, of course, is to preserve the current policy choices. It's your role as policy recommenders and council's role as policy decision-makers to adjust that. But we've, that's our recommendation. And one of the ideas, perhaps a slightly longer run, would be in the course of the coming, soon coming, general plan update, to really look at the areas that are zoned PL and should they be zoned PL. Some are very much appropriate for PL, others perhaps could bear revision to VMU or otherwise, but that's a broader policy choice than we're discussing tonight. The next one is, again, on page five, the beginning of the table, second row, I've simplified the setbacks to this point. To be front setback, set forth in zoning district, side and rear, four feet, except for conversions of existing interior space. There, it's, it's this, this, there, you keep whatever the building has. And here, there's a key point to bear in mind that I don't think I expressed terribly well the other day. Setbacks are a zoning standard that's quite different than a building code, fire code standard about fire separation or about minimum fire rating for walls. So as I read it, the state's forcing us to accept four-foot set side and rear, not front, side and rear setbacks for ADUs that are up to 800 square feet and 16 feet in height. But that doesn't mean that we have to throw out the fire code. So our fire code generally requires for buildings within five feet of the property line, fire-rated walls for that, that delta between four feet and five feet. So we can require for an ADU that have, be a fire-rated wall, which means either no openings or the openings are glazing, fire glazing, not, that's a bad phrase, but you know, glazing that meets the minimum fire rating standard set in the fire code, which is not exactly your typical cheap window out of Home Depot.
It might be appropriate, then, in that, in that row in Table A, to make reference to something in Title IX.
We could add that reference.
I'm not sure what the, what the appropriate place in Title IX is.
Probably the section that adopts the fire code.
I thought you were going to say fire code.
It might be good to add, I would suggest adding that perhaps as a general note, because it really applies to any of these pieces. And we have a note E, all applicable regulations of municipal code shall be met, include, we could add, including building, fire, and other codes adopted, and then cite.
Other codes outside of, yeah, outside of Title 10.
Yeah, and then we cite Title IX.
Or call it non-zoning codes or something, I don't know.
Yeah, and the subsections of Title IX, there's three or four subsections that each adopt, the building code, the fire code, et cetera. We can cite those.
Okay.
And that way, it's clear to anybody reading the code, oh, I have to look not just at this, but also at the building code.
And I apologize for breaking the train of thought. You're supposed to be telling us something here, and then we can ask questions.
No, no, that's a good point. That further emphasizes the point I was making, which is that fire separation distances are different than setbacks. Setbacks are a zoning standard, those, the state has limited things. Fire separation standards, building codes, fire codes are different. We can continue to impose those, at least until the legislature further acts.
But so the fire code, our fire code says five feet, or if it's less than five, then you have to do other things.
Right.
Is that the gist of it?
Roughly.
Okay.
And it also imposes a building separation requirement that off the top of my head is 10 feet between buildings within a lot. That too can be imposed, because that's also not a side or rear setback. And question, Vice Chair?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so on Exhibit A, we're actually adding to E, where it says all applicable regulations of the municipal code shall be met, including, that's where we would be adding.
Yeah, I think that's where we should add it.
I was just making notes, and I wanted to make it in the right place.
Yeah. That's where it should be added, and for what it's worth, that's exactly what it says already, because it says all applicable provisions of the building code.
Just clarification.
But I understand one of our goals is to make this, and all of our ordinances, more understandable to regular folk.
Yep.
And part of doing that is having obvious cross-references. You know, we aren't going to input Title IX in full here, that wouldn't make sense. But let's reference it. We all know that the building code always applies, but a typical homeowner may not realize that, so it'd be worth adding that reference in.
Yeah.
So that's what we recommend there. The next piece that we've adjusted is, as we talked about last time, we've added a new note three to Table A, and I think we have to renumber once everything's done, because we deleted, you know, one.
Yeah, because note, note one went away.
No, actually, we did it right, because one is one, there's a two, three, and a four, we just need to get the.
Two's all, note one is gone.
The old note one is gone, two became one. There is a note two on page nine, we just got the tabbing wrong. We added a note three.
Oh, there it is.
This is the one to pick up, the other, one of the new exceptions, this 800 square feet, 16-foot side and rear setbacks, 16 feet in height or shorter. We talked about last time that that wasn't clearly stated in a few places, but now we've stated it clearly, notwithstanding, Table A, you can have this.
Well, this is not 816, this is 850 square feet and no height.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm mixing up.
And 1,000 square feet for a bigger one, yeah.
And note three.
Yeah.
Thank you. Note G is the one I was just describing. Note three is the one on size. There's another exception to size. And then the next one we've added that's worth mentioning in full is a new subsection M for multifamily dwelling, accessory dwelling units. And this is seeking to capture what we talked about last time, that certain multifamily buildings are allowed now to have ADUs, but they have to meet the standards of Table A, the standards of the code, and there's some density limits that are set as stated on page 12. And I think that's it in terms of points bearing immediate edits to the code that are worth mentioning. Let me just check my notes real quick. The other one is, we.
Junior ADUs, do we add that?
Yeah, we added that, the junior ADUs as well, which we'd added the very last minute last time. That's now here in subsection L on page 11, the express allowance for junior ADUs. And mindful of Chair Quilisi's point, we've also amended the two short-term rental prohibitions to say 30 days except February.
I noticed that.
And for what it's worth.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. For what it's worth, the state code uses 30 days, but they don't think about February, but we're going above and beyond the state.
We're being, we're allowing more than the state allows.
Right, which is permitted by allowing a month-to-month rental in February. And we've also adjusted the parking requirement in the table to reflect that for an ADU that is part of or attached to an existing primary unit, we can no longer require the one parking space. So we've adjusted the parking portion of Table A to reflect that. And my last kind of broad comment is, if you haven't, you may have heard, last night or the night before, Santa Barbara adopted their ADU urgency ordinance at the council level, and they have exempted the very high and the high fire hazard severity zones entirely.
Anything up on a hill?
Right, their hillside zones, also near historic districts. It's a bold move. It's likely to draw challenge. I think it's defensible in part because they're a charter city, and that gives them added power, and there's some significant support in this day and age for robust fire regulations. But because it's sure to draw challenge, my recommendation is, let's see how that fares before doing the same thing here. If they win, then we can do the same thing. If they lose, then you won't have expended money defending a losing argument.
I don't know, we're not a charter city.
Right, all we would have is the fire safety elements of the defense. We don't have the charter city defense, we're only a general law city.
Yeah.
Although I'm not, the charter city defense is perhaps the weaker.
Yeah, a general law city can, can regulate the heck out of anything also.
Right, it can, it just has a little less power. And for what it's worth, the distinction between the two have been watered down greatly over the last few years. But it's a very bold move that Santa Barbara took, and I applaud their, their effort to stand forth. I also think that we should see how that fares before we do the same thing. But of course, it's a policy choice for the commission to recommend and the council to decide. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
One quick question. This goes back to Exhibit A of Attachment A, top of page 12 or 14, number two and then A, this is back to that multifamily dwelling. When it says up to 25% of existing multifamily dwelling density can be, you know, converted, is that the total, 25% of the total built area or, or the actual additional spaces which include like, you know, storage rooms, boiler rooms, passageways, et cetera, that could be converted?
I took it to mean 25% of the count of individual living units in the multifamily unit, but it doesn't say.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it meant that.
So, yeah.
Or the extra spaces or the total complete built space, which included living and accessory uses.
We read density to mean the number of units, not space. So if the density is the number of units, then the provision is, you can build up to the multiple attached ADUs, up to 25% of the existing multifamily unit count or density, but only if they're not within the existing units. And if that term is confusing, we could revise it to be.
Oh, so you can't, you can't have an attached ADU or JADU inside an individual dwelling unit of a multifamily dwelling unit?
That is how I read the law.
You can only put that ADU or JADU inside the boiler room or a storage room or something.
Right, that's how I read the state law, is that the forced allowance is only for converting existing non-rented space, or non-living space into an ADU, which perhaps makes more sense in more urban environments. There are arguments that have been raised by ADU advocates in some other cities that it's meant to be read, that the latter piece, the non-livable piece, is a, is an option, not a requirement. I think that misreads the law, and I think the law is fairly clear that, or as clear as this muddle can be, that we are only required to accept ADUs outside of the existing unit count. That it's not about subdividing current units, but about converting current non-living space to living space.
Yeah, as long as you.
So in that sense, multifamily units are treated very differently from single-family residences.
Correct.
And that's for attached accessory, and then the detached, you're allowed up to two.
Right, and the detached is this whole separate allowance for two.
So let me repeat this back, because I'm still not sure that I was completely clear. So the 25% is of the actual dwelling units?
Correct. So one way to do it would be, we could say that, if we wanted to say it more plainly, revise that first sentence to, or that first clause, to refer to up to 25% of the number of existing multifamily dwelling units. So that that whole first sentence would read, "An owner of a multifamily dwelling may build multiple attached accessory dwelling units, comma, up to 25% of the number of existing multifamily dwelling units, comma, if solely within the portions of the existing multifamily dwelling structures that are not used as livable space, including but not limited to storage rooms, boiler rooms, passageways, attics, basements, or garages, and if each attached accessory dwelling unit complies with all applicable building codes for dwellings." And then, and then it has the size limit of.
That clarifies for me.
I like the clarification. I think we should add it. Now, I wrote part of it down, but then I put dot, 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 because I didn't get the tail end of it. So when we come to, you know, if we.
Yeah, there's only, most of that was already what was there.
Add the language, okay. But yeah, that, I think that's a lot better. That works for me.
And that's the limit of my comments, but I'll defer to Lucas if you have further, and Suzanne if you have further comments.
Anything to add right now, Lucas or Suzanne? All right, anyone else on the commission have questions for staff on the staff report? Go ahead, Ray.
In the last meeting, I brought up the consideration of allowing junior ADUs within a reasonably sized ADU to allow and provide more affordable housing. Is that something that we just don't want to happen? We discussed it. I still think it's a great idea, if someone's going to build an 800 to 1,000 square foot ADU, that they be allowed a junior ADU within that, if the owner lives in the primary.
Should have at least two bedrooms, I would think, yeah?
Yeah, sure, two or three, but in a 1,000 square foot or 1,200 square foot ADU, you could fit three bedrooms.
If, if we are, if we're talking about an ADU that has more than one bedroom, is there anything illegal about renting a bedroom?
No. If the, under.
Not as a junior ADU, but as a bedroom.
If the ADU is permitted after January 1st, 2020, then the property owner needn't live on the property, and then, so it could be, both could be rented, the primary and the ADU, and the ADU owner could sublease a bedroom. The limits on that would be the lease clause.
Okay. But that's a different conversation.
That's a private, private agreement.
Yeah, there's no, there's no city imposed limits on, I realize it's two of my questions.
Okay.
Answering the second question first.
You usurped my question.
The, there's no city imposed limits on renting of a bedroom, with one big exception, at least 30 days or February. That's the limit. No short-term rentals, no vacation rentals, but otherwise, you can rent a bedroom as you wish, although it has to be a legal bedroom. We have a current pending code case that's renting illegal bedrooms. That doesn't work either.
If you, if you put cooking facilities in it, then it becomes a JADU.
And you've got to get it approved as a JADU. And if you unlawfully subdivided an existing room by throwing up plywood and calling it a bedroom, then you're also going to be in a code case. But, so if it's a legal bedroom, then you can rent it at will, as long as it's not a short-term rental. To answer the second, the earlier question, staff had an extensive discussion of that, that idea, and I was remiss to mention earlier my compendium of changes. Our recommendation at this time is to continue to explore that approach and do so in addition to and not in this ordinance. The reason we recommend doing so is we want to ensure that we get, within a reasonable amount of time, this ordinance up to put us in full compliance with state code soon, and further consider the idea of allowing multiple ADUs or JADUs on the same property as a policy choice befitting a full discussion. And I think the vehicle to do that is twofold. One, if the commission so chooses, when you send this ordinance up, if you do, you could send it with the side recommendation that the council studied that too. And then either direct it to be studied here or studied at council, kind of go there. And depending on the council's wishes, they might choose to have it be studied on our first quarter 2020 to-do list, or they might decide to wrap that into the general plan, which is also on our 2020 to-do list. But that's my recommendation for how to handle it, which I realize may be not thrilling to all of the commission, but it's, again, it's your choice, not ours. That's our recommendation. You guys have the votes.
Yeah, and I think actually that was really part of the motion from last meeting, but since it was, that, that we recommend to council to consider an option for the ADU and J, additional ADU and JDUs.
Possibly based on law.
But, but since it was coming back for discussion, I understand why you wrote it the way you did in the, in the minutes, but, but that was really, I think, that was the intent of that motion, is to, going above and beyond what we're required to do, would be a council, something that, a consideration for council. That's, that's all. I did have just one brief comment on page, page nine, subsection G.
Before you do that, can I just?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Ray, yeah. Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, Ray, yeah.
Just, I thought you were going to make a comment on the same topic. I hear your reasoning to to send this ordinance forward and then revisit a junior ADU and an ADU. To me, I'm not sure that serves our residents the best, depending how long that takes, because someone may want to build an ADU and it holds up their design plan and and moving forward, because they're waiting to see what's going to happen with that, because that's what they're wanting to create, to offer more affordable housing or or however, you know, serves them the best. So, um, yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I don't, I'm I'm not fully aligned with that, but.
My only comment is I'll refer you to your colleagues.
Well, when we get to the deliberations, you can make a motion to add that, and we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? I have a few, but like.
Just real briefly, the page nine.
Is it detachment A or exhibit A?
Exhibit A, page nine. Just a clarification I think we need to do. Subsection G, two. The reference to subsection, it looks like it's, when I read this, I couldn't figure out what it was.
Two is is indented too far. It should be out at the boundary.
Okay.
It's not a subset of G.
It is G2.
It is not.
No.
Yeah.
It is two.
It's not?
G is under one.
That's what you were saying earlier, Matt.
Two is indented too far. Two should be back at the same level as three and four.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so two is in the subset of G. Two is, the tabbing got screwed up.
I couldn't find the place where you're talking about before, so.
Yeah, sorry, but the the tabbing got screwed up.
Okay, so under two, junior accessory dwelling units, I think if you can, the reference to subsection, it looks like it's one, not L.
Oh, that should be.
See, it should be italicized like.
It's in in the fonts, the L looks like.
It should be in the font that's italicized, so you can figure out whether it's a one or an L. That's all.
Ah, okay. Over on page 11, subsection L is italic, the title is italicized. That's what you're referring to.
Because I was looking for it and I couldn't find it, and then I then I realized what it was, and so, very minor, so.
Yeah, that's that's repairable, because yeah, the lowercase l and I do look similar, or the one, I'm sorry, look similar. Thank you.
More questions for staff?
Not a question, a comment. Thank you. This looks good. I just want to thank staff for their work on this.
Extensive work. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Okay, I I have a couple of questions. Go back to page three of seven in the staff report. It says the state JADU law requires a city to require a permit for a JD- JADU.
Yes.
And I have, because I spent the past two weeks reading these five bills, and it made me crazy. But 65852.22A says, notwithstanding 652.65852.22, a local agency may, by ordinance, provide for the creation of junior A accessory dwelling units in single-family residence. It doesn't say must.
Subdivision G of 65852.22 says that if a city has not adopted an ordinance, the local agency shall necessarily approve a permit to construct a JADU in compliance with some cross-reference sections. Stitching those two together, as I think you noted.
65852.22G, for purpose of this section, the following terms have the following meanings.
That's H. G is the one, if a local agency has not adopted a local ordinance pursuant to this section, the local agency shall necessarily approve a permit.
Oh, man. ledgeinfo.legislature.ca.gov.
Which version of which bill were you looking at?
Is different. The one I pulled off the web today.
So which, for the current code or for the bills? Because these bills, these, this isn't today's law. This law doesn't take effect until January 1st.
Okay, okay.
So if you looked at how these two sections read today, that would not.
I read the bills too, but they made me crazy.
Yeah, the the reality is you have to read the bills to understand what the current, what the law will read. The law that's on, because you're you're correct.
What I've been looking at will change the 1st of January.
Correct.
Okay.
Ledge info updates January 1st.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, you are correct. The current version of 65852.22 is very much an option. One of the things that was changed in these bills was adding the subdivision G that I cited, that makes it required.
Okay.
That's what changed, so.
The second, the second line of that paragraph says the state law requires and allows. Does it require or does it allow?
Uh, in this context, more or less both. It requires that we allow.
How can you do, how can you require and allow?
The law requires that the city allow. There's two two implied subjects in that sentence.
Right, because not everyone's required to put one in, but when the state law is in effect, you will be allowed to build.
Okay, so the new state law will say the city must have an ordinance.
No, the new state law.
Regarding JADUs, and once it has that ordinance, that ordinance must have the following characteristics?
Not exactly. The new state law says the the city may adopt an ordinance. If it does, the ordinance shall include the following in a list. It says in another subsection, if you don't adopt an ordinance, you shall approve an ADU that meets the same subsection, the same requirements. It doesn't put it into one sentence. It has it in two pieces, but the net effect is the same. You either have to adopt a JADU ordinance, or you have to let a JADU be approved.
It's functionally the same whether you have an ordinance or don't.
More or less. The adopting ordinance allows you to set some further limits beyond the pure state limits, which is why we recommend doing so. And that's why we've added subdivision, subsection L to this section to take advantage of the limited amount of regulation we can impose on junior ADUs.
And if I could just even take it a step further, I think the other reason that I would say the staff is looking at this as as adopting it, and then we're looking at it today, we've looked at it previously, is I don't know that we necessarily want to send every single resident to to the to the government code when you're looking at at these regulations. I mean, if we're spinning our heads as regards to how this works, and they come to us asking those very same questions, I'd rather have it in our our rules and regulations and that we've interpreted it versus sending them off to to the government code sections.
Right, well, a citation is legally sufficient, but it's not helpful necessarily.
Right, wholeheartedly agreed. That's why we've added significant portion of this ordinance to fill in those gaps and to make it more plain. So for the most part, a homeowner who's trying to figure out, can I build an ADU, and if so, how? The documents that'll need to figure that out are this ordinance, their underlying zone, to confirm their residential, and their, the building code for some pieces of it. That's what they're going to need, the building code and Title IX, fire code, Title IX pieces, plumbing code, and this ADU ordinance. That's our goal. Now, there's obviously going to be a couple of edge cases where you're going to need to look at the state laws. But the goal is to make this a little more user-friendly than some of the rest of our zoning code, and it's 2004 vintage.
I didn't only read ledge info.
Fair, fair.
I read the five bills. And and I have to ask you, and I don't mean this rhetorically, AB 881 has Section 1, 1.5, 2, and 2.5, that all appear, and I haven't, I can't say I've read every word and compared every word among all those versions, but they, those four sections appear all to modify 65852.2 differently.
Yes, that's correct.
So what is the precedence here?
So the way that.
How how can we know that anything that we pass is going to be legal come the 1st of January?
So the answer lies in the fact that the very end of each of the five bills provides which sections of which bill control depending on the order in which they were chaptered, the order in which they were added to the official book of book of laws. That, the last piece of the bills said, if this is chaptered before that, then that takes effect. If that goes before that, then that takes effect. And to save y'all to have a lot of trouble, we took the liberty of doing that math for you. And the controlling section was in our slides last time for all five bills. And what matter, what what I use as my watch section is AB 881, Section 1.5. That's the operative version of 65852.2 for the next five years. But you're right, the bills, these sections all amended in different ways.
The same code in different ways.
And be, and it was a result of the fact that you had five ADU bills with five different legislators, each wanting slightly different things. And it went into the sausage maker and it came out with, uh, the way it came out. And and it's not an uncommon strategy when they aren't willing, when they can't all get along, or for obvious political reasons, they don't want to have a single bill with only one author, they want all their own bill, so you just stitch them together. And the way they've done that is the order in which they're chaptered. So the the one that I that I use as my watch bill is AB 881, Section 1.5. And that's the one that is best captures what actually took effect or will take effect.
Okay, so that that affects having an ordinance about ADUs. It affects the restriction on parking? Because looking at ledge info, it says a local agency may reduce parking requirements for an ADU. But does the new bill say it must?
Which section are you on, parking?
This is page four of seven of the staff report.
Sorry.
And I realize this is a distillation of the rest, but I try to read it for an overview before I get to the detail.
So, yeah, we are allowed to impose one space per ADU with several exceptions. And those exceptions include not for attached ADUs, not for ADUs within a half a mile of a public transit stop, not for ADUs within an historic district, and not for ADUs in a preferential parking district where you get permits to park in the street and the ADU owners or residents don't get a permit.
Okay.
And and if there's a car-share vehicle. And for that one, it doesn't mean that there's a zipcar parked. It means that there's a dedicated car-share vehicle parking space, which I don't believe we have any in the city. Most of this is written for more urban places, for what it's worth.
Okay, so if if the city chose not to write into an ordinance a restriction on the parking, that would be okay?
And those state restrictions, I just decided with control instead.
With those with those exceptions that you mentioned.
Right, if we if we, if if our ordinance was silent on parking, all of those restrictions would apply instead.
Okay, on page five of seven of the staff report, second second paragraph, it refers to government code 65852.2 subdivision F3B.
Yes.
I cannot find that.
Again, that doesn't exist.
Is that in one of the five bills and I just missed it?
It's in AB 881, Section 1.5. It doesn't exist in current law, which is why you probably didn't see it on ledge info.
It's not in ledge info for sure, yeah.
That's because it's not current law. It takes effect January 1st.
All of this is January 1st.
Yeah.
And Steiner's steady standards. Okay, all right. Okay, not recommending amending the ordinance to include the option to allow a qualified nonprofit. That's fine. It is an agency choice. On page six of seven, staff report, last paragraph, amnesty program. Says the agency must grant such request, this is a five-year delay request, if the violation is not necessary to protect health and safety. I did not understand the wording. I know all those words. This sentence didn't make sense to me.
Uh, apologize. We were talking on another one. What page was that again?
Page six of seven, last paragraph, line six and seven.
Midway through, yeah.
Ah, yes, the amnesty program. So there, the the requirement is that an owner of an ADU that doesn't meet current code may request or, and the agency has to grant, a five-year delay in enforcing the zoning code against that non-conforming ADU, but only if the non-conformity need not be corrected.
To protect health and safety.
Oh, so what's missing is the, if the vi- if correcting the violation, we're missing the correcting.
Oh, if correcting the violation is not necessary.
In other words, i- i- in in plain language, if you have an ADU that's non-conforming for a reason, or that violates the zoning code, that's even illegal, for a reason that isn't a health or safety reason, an owner can ask for a five-year delay in enforcement, and we have to give it to them. If it's not health and safety. If it's a health and safety problem, like bootleg electrical or bootleg gas, natural gas lines, then we can enforce. We can enforce health and safety. But if you had an ADU that was built, you know, a half an inch or half a foot off on setbacks, they can, they can request a five-year delay in enforcement. And we have to give it to them. And we are the judge, we, the city, the building official, is the judge of health or safety.
Got it.
And would they have to vacate the ADU if someone's living in it?
If it's.
If someone's living in it and it's a half foot off.
No, because it it's a five-year delay in our ability to enforce the zoning code at all.
They have five year and they can.
They get five years to get their life together.
So if someone's living in there.
Move it six inches.
They don't need to move out.
Right, if some, if if it's not health or safety, if it's just health or safety, then we can enforce in that one, which may or may not require. I mean, in my example of bootleg electric, you just fix the electrical. You don't necessarily, you would move out until it's fixed, get a yellow tag.
So is is, would the fire requirement go under health and safety if that back setback, if that setback wall is not?
That would, that one is a bit tough to answer in the complete abstract. It would depend on the building official judgment of the totality of the fire risk of that structure. You could imagine a structure where it was otherwise safe and it had sprinklers, for example, and that lack of a firewall probably doesn't rise to health and safety level versus a poorly built check that has some significant fire risk. I think that's that's more tough to answer in the abstract, but it's going to go back to the building code, the fire code, Title IX requirements, and the building official's judgment of fire safety as to whether that person can or cannot get an exemption for five years from enforcement.
Okay, any other questions? I have questions on the resolution and the exhibit, but I think it's probably best left to when we're deliberating.
Then it may be appropriate for public comment.
Yeah, right.
I just have one question, and I apologize if you already explained this.
No worries, we're happy to explain.
So on the exhibit, Attachment A, page 11, three, let's see, junior accessory dwelling units, L3. So it says junior accessory dwelling units shall include at a minimum an efficiency kitchen. It doesn't have to be, have a separate bathroom. Must include a separate entrance, but the part about it does not need to be independent from the primary dwelling unit. I just.
That's one of my questions too. What does that mean?
I, yeah, it's very confusing.
So the reason we added that was because if an AD, a JADU, junior ADU, has shared sanitation, then it it has to have access to the to the main unit. Because it's, so it wouldn't be fully independent. So you could have a door that's lockable and controlled by both sides. Uh, or or, in other words, the standard requirement for an ADU is that it's fully independent. No doors, all walls, dividing the two.
Okay.
But for junior ADU, because they're allowed to have shared sanitation, our recommendation was to expressly acknowledge that they don't need to be independent. And I, it it does raise the question.
This context, independent is a special word.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Um, it does raise the question. You could choose to narrow the JADU allowance and require independence if it has separate sanitation and only allow non-independence if it if it has shared sanitation.
I ju- it's.
But that might be overly complex.
It just seems like it's more, it just is, to me, it's more clear to just say the JDU can have a shared, shared sanitation facility with the existing, uh, structure.
Which is either in the second.
Which would be existing single family.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the, yeah, it's already there. To me, to add.
Okay.
It's not, it.
That's fine.
When I got to that point, I was, I started to get confused.
It was a little confusing to add that.
Because we do say, we very clearly, I think you guys, what you already have there is is pretty clear.
Yeah.
I would agree with that, too, to the, to the next, the, and it's not, you know, you'd be independent.
I think I'm okay with it.
I'm getting into deliberations, I'm sorry about that, but.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, if we're if we're through with questions for the moment, we'll open the public hearing. I have two cards for item two. Mr. Wirick.
I wanted to point out one. By the way, I want to compliment you. I actually watched you deliberating. It looked so much fun. I just, like I was telling your chair, I thought I had to join you tonight, you know? Yeah, anyway, yeah, and I might ask the chair for a little indulgence, a little extra time, but. but we'll see. Um, I wanted to make one observation.
Yep.
As I read it, the reality of this thing, it's kind of like when, uh, the alternate plans were supplied for the DWR for, uh, water management. How many cities do you think are gonna be deluding HCD with their new ordinances? And how fast do you think they're gonna have, they're gonna get these reviews out? Okay? And, and apparently, and what I'm trying to say is that I, I think we should be willing, uh, to look at reasonable interpretation to, consistent with our character in terms of these ambiguities that you are pointing out, and rather than excessively trying to figure out what the state means, I think we ought to be a little bit more free to say, let's do a defensible interpretation. We're, we probably aren't gonna hear from HCD for what, a year?
Five days.
Eight months, six months?
At least six months. They're, they're gonna get inundated, there's 476 cities.
And then they're gonna, and then we have 30 days to respond if they think something doesn't work, you know? And then we get to wait for them to come back and say whether we've responded appropriately. I guess what I'm trying to say is I would not worry too excessively, in my opinion, and this is to everybody, about what the heck is the law? Because frankly, I don't think the state knows what the law is right now. And so, as long as we have a reasonably defensive, defensible, uh, you know, thing in our ordinance, I, I don't think we should obsess too excessively about it. That's just a comment of mine.
I would agree with you, that in general...
Let's do an interpretation in our ordinance that protects our character that we think is consistent.
Perfect could be the enemy of good enough.
Right. Now, that's one comment. The other thing is I would please ask you to really consider careful attention to definitions with an eye, and wording with an eye towards, how is someone thinking of taking advantage of this in bad faith going to look at this? And, and let me give you an example. We go back and forth between residential units and dwelling units. I counted four different definitions of dwelling units in the code, and sometimes we're caught referring to residential and sometimes dwelling. I think I need to be very careful about this. And let me give you an example. In the definitions in Title 10 for dwelling, dwelling unit or housing unit, the definition in, in the definition section there says, "A room or group of internally connected rooms that have sleeping, cooking, eating, and sanitation facilities, but not more than one kitchen." So if it's two kitchens, it's not a dwelling unit? In our code?
Could have two kitchens.
Well, not in our code. Says it's not a dwelling unit if it's more than one kitchen.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and occupied or intended for one household on a long-term basis. And then other, there's other dwelling unit definitions elsewhere, and then like on short-term rentals, we, we don't say dwelling unit, it says residential unit. I'm just saying, think about someone who's trying to take advantage of ambiguity. All right? There's other examples where we say dwelling unit is another definition of one family. I can tell you affirmatively of arguments that are going on in the residential rental age, uh, industry right now about what a family is. Is it all 12 or 15 cousins, uh, renting one room and sleeping in three shifts? I've heard that argument.
And every city that's tried to enforce any definition of family, if you'll allow me to jump in on that one, has lost. Newport Beach keeps losing.
Okay.
In making new law that's pretty bad.
Can't define family in any way, shape, or form?
Family is defined by people who choose to live together as a functioning household unit.
Okay.
With one or more ownership of a shared functioning household.
So in other words, we could have, we could have two ADUs with two four-foot setbacks if we don't use our fire code, and there could be 20 people in each one, if they call themselves a family.
If they live together as an integrated housing unit. And enforcing that is a challenge. But, we can still impose the building code's occupancy limits, although I think those need some revision as well.
Well, I might, then I'm raising the issue of maybe we need to, rather than just saying a family, we have an occupancy number in an ADU. We might want to think about that, okay?
It varies by the number of bedrooms or something.
Or something like that, yes.
Yeah.
All right. The other thing is I fully and completely agree with staff's recommendation on PL, cause I would not want to have a backdoor effective rezoning without going to council. Council needs to, is really, I'm, as a council person, rezoning is really our purview.
Absolutely.
And I would not want to see any sort of backdoor rezoning of PL, you know, de facto. So I really agree with that.
For example, the school district back lot.
Well, you know, yeah. So, uh, exactly. The other, uh, a couple other comments that I, that I want to make, um, just along these lines, is the, um, like, like definition of short-term rental. Okay? Now, if you are someone who's trying to take advantage of the law, and I understand what you mean, short-term rental means the renting of a residential unit or less for 30 days excepting rentals for the month of February. Let's say you're trying to take advantage of the law. How are you gonna interpret that?
Well, you could take the exception.
That restriction doesn't apply to February.
Yeah, you could, it could go either way, yeah.
Right, you could rent for 30 days in February if that were possible.
Well, are you, are, are, no, you, no, you, you could actually interpret this, say, I can rent for five days in February.
Right, because you're saying except February.
Short-term rental means the renting of a short, resident for less than 30 days except, I mean, if you're trying to, if you're not interpreting in good faith...
So we should clarify that.
Think about, I, I think, yeah, when you, think about someone who's trying to take advantage and not, not follow obvious intent.
Yeah.
That's a fair point.
All right.
We don't want open season on short-term rentals in February.
In February.
Okay?
Okay.
But we do want people to be able to rent for the month of February, so we need to reword it, yes.
Just think, think about, you know, people trying to take advantage in bad faith. Cause that happens.
Yeah.
All right? And then I, uh, uh, yeah, so I, I really think we ought to, like, for example, in impact fees, there's a different definition of dwelling unit than we have in Title 10. So, Article 2, excuse me, Chapter 9, Article 2, has a different, different definition of dwelling unit than there is in the other part of the definition se- section in the same title. Okay? So, people can take advantage of these things, is what I'm trying to say, and need to be very careful about it. So, um, I, I guess those are my comments, you know, it, uh, oh, yeah, one other comment I wanted to make. I would welcome, as a council person, a recommendation that maybe we, council apply some, uh, appropriate some funds to findings about fire safety, to help us with our defensibility on things like the setback issue. And I think where Santa Barbara kind of just declared, I think that we might want to look at what we should do in our building code, what's the impact of our particular wildfire situation? We've already made a finding in our Title IX in terms of our declaration of the entire city as a high hazard zone. And if there's, maybe, um, there's something defensible we can have there as a finding to help us with this issue of the very small setbacks. And I'd be more comfortable with, you know, I'd be more comfortable if we actually appropriated some dollars towards, you know, a fire safety analysis, rather than just declaring. So, I'll probably have other comments, you know, as I think about it, but I did, I did, I did want to make, yeah, please don't excessively be concerned with trying to figure out what the state meant. You know? Let's be more concerned about...
Saying that's a fool's errand.
What we need to have in our ordinance that's reasonably defensible, and let HCD figure it out for us, you know? I don't know.
Okay. I do have a question for Mr. Summers. I, I thought that one of the strictures in these five new bills, maybe all 18 of them, says if you haven't, if you haven't passed an ordinance that complies with state law and goes into effect before just January 1st, that you are somehow in violation of something. Is that, is that right? Cause we don't have time to do it now. This is, this is the last planning commission meeting of the year, and there's no more council meetings this year.
The ADU advocacy groups have asserted that an ordinance that doesn't meet every stricture of the state code is invalid come January 1st. The city attorney's community as a whole very strongly disagrees with them.
Okay.
There is no resolution of that, as of yet. HCD, for what it's worth, hasn't opined that an ordinance, in fact, I think in one, at least in one comment from one of their more senior people, opined that ordinances don't fall apart. So our assessment is that, no. The language in particular that would have struck any ordinance was dropped from, one of them, AB 68, I think, and wasn't put in place. So our position is that if our ordinance has some delta between our ordinance and state laws minimums come January 1st, or even thereafter, that it doesn't invalidate the whole thing. It only would invalidate whatever little particular piece wasn't aligned.
Wasn't in conformance, okay.
And that's also supported by, as, as noted from the, the commentators, by our severability clause, which we added to this ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
And for what it's worth, any particular, if we had a particular homeowner who came forward and said, oh, you know, footnote six of this piece of the statute says I get this thing solved, staff would take a look at it. If our conclusion was, you know, you're right, we wouldn't force them to file a lawsuit, we would fix it.
Yeah. Okay? Thank you. Another card on item two, Mr. Daddy. Are you having fun yet?
Well, I used to lobby for 23 years in Sacramento, I understand the affliction they have. And so, these five laws fix the last five laws, that fix the last five laws from three years ago. We're duking this out. So what I would ask you to do is to go as slow as you can and get it right once, cause we don't do that very often in this community. Uh, I'd, I'd like you to consider a lot of things. We, we're about to throw three or four or five different items into the same mix. So please, when you do this, consider the totality of what we're gonna do as far as the fire. Take Ray's issue here, you know, that'll go to Title IX, and what's gonna happen in Title IX? Well, we're gonna look at the rules and figure out what the rules say. And the rules say if we have a garage, and that garage is a foot over the property line, or it doesn't meet a five-foot setback, and that garage is converted to an ADU, then that garage is gonna be legal, because that's what the law currently says as of this minute. I don't know what it's gonna be in two weeks. But then the second story, if they should put a second story on that thing, it needs to have a five-foot setback, and it's an ADU, and it's a second unit. So now you're splitting that into two units, and now it has to have a five-foot setback. So, we're gonna put ADUs in a four-foot zone, we're gonna allow them up to be 16 feet high unless you have an existing garage that's non-permitted, and you request it go to an ADU, and then it can have a second story.
I think the law says you can't, you can't make it illegal to have something less than 16 feet high. Is that right?
If it's 800 square feet in size, or smaller.
You can't, you can't bar less than 800 square feet or less than 16 feet high.
No, and. An ADU that is 800 square feet or smaller in area, 16 feet or shorter in height, and with four feet or wider side and rear setbacks, is protected. If you don't meet one of those four triggers, you're not protected.
And the garage will much certainly be higher than 16 feet.
Most garages are.
And so, that's, that's what that's gonna be. So then what we do is then we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna have somebody that's kinda non-conforming, we got people there. And somebody wants to build on the back four foot. I, I'm pretty sure the rules are gonna be that this home was built in 1947, or this unit was built in 1947, or it was converted, or it's illegally converted, and we're not gonna do anything. And, can I request some more time? There's only two of us tonight. And, we're gonna have to make the new unit hardened, because the second unit, it's not gonna be as easy to harden the second unit as it is gonna be to build a new unit harder to. Geography, topography, inclimate, and we're on the wildland interface. So we're gonna get a little bit of slack on that. Then what we're gonna do is then we're gonna come in and we're gonna go ahead and allow for a non-permitted structure. That's 120 square feet, called a shed or a tool shed. And that thing is gonna have to be under 25 feet tall, because there's no height restrictions on non-permitted sheds that have less than 24 volts, which is, you can have power in these things. But it's gotta be low voltage. So low voltage doesn't require permit. 120 square feet doesn't require permit. The height, as long as it's 25 feet under, cause that's our height requirement, doesn't require permit. The only time we could require a permit is in that idiot section of the fence law, that they may not let you put a shed under an oak tree in the drip line during nesting season between April and August. So, you're gonna have to write that in there too, cause that's a stupid rules we have in the incidental section. And so then we're gonna go ahead and introduce the large animals, and then we're gonna have to take a look and say, how big of a footprint, and what have we got left for what, right? So you got about four or five things going on at one time, so please, take your time and get it right. Fold them all in, because it's just exactly what Mr. Wyrick said. Every house is gonna want a pool in their front yard, cause we got a pool in the front yard, right there. So what they do in Ojai is, I want that. They got that, I want that. Why can't I have that? So when I put a wall in on a private street, which is my street, and it's a subdivision, the city did not accept, people would say, well, the daddy wall, he got to put up a wall, but, yeah, I know, but you wanna put one six feet into the street, and you wanna put one here. And we went through all these things, because we have poor rules, not some of the rules, just about every one of the rules. And so...
That's why we're working on Title 10.
Yeah, well, we, we could've been working for the last, you know, 25 different meetings over five years that planning commission canceled, cause they didn't have any work to do. So, please, take, take a look, take this thing slow, and then let's figure out what we need to do. And I do welcome Mr. Wyrick's recommendation that we figure out what we need to do to harden this thing, because we need to be into fire hardening. We really do. We, we're gonna have to build these things separately. When I look at the rules, and you're all aware of what a 501(c)(5) is, because the state is saying that we want 501(c)(5)'s to be able to build second units in the backyard, and be able to sell them, and have separate ownership. And there's a whole bunch of 501's, and the 501 say this, if you're a three, that's charitable, anybody can give money and take a deduction. All the 501's, all the way through, the 20 or so, you just don't pay on the revenue. You don't pay taxes on the revenue that you develop. Only the three you can deduct for any non-affiliation. If you have an affiliation, then those people that give money to that, that believe it has something to do with their business can deduct, is a tax, unless you're in a blue state now, and you really don't have that write-off anymore. So, when you get into these words, nonprofit, none of you can give an accurate description of what a legal nonprofit is. Because a 501(c)(3), which is a church, and which is Rotary, and which is a number of other organizations, are not nonprofits. Those are actual designated as charitable. It's the most misuse, misunderstood, cross-pollinated, wrong word there is.
I think the staff recommendation here is that we not add that to the ordinance right now to allow a 501(c)(5).
Or any other, we, we have...
Any Cs, but at this time, but we will see a law change, you, trust me. We will have one, because 501(c)(5) protects...
The state may well impose it later.
It is a farm worker, it is a farm worker building. So, you have a protected class, and they're already grumbling about that, that that got left out. So, we already have some people digging in on that thing.
All right.
So, you know, good luck, take your time, but please stop and identify and define. And then, one of the things that I have found to be miserable for my 25 years here, is I would appreciate that whenever a civilian walks into what I call the building department CDD, they no longer get a single verbal answer. That's no longer good enough. It's not adequate, it's not good enough, it's nothing that we should accept. What they do is they get a printout with code 10 dot 882 dot 5, and it actually just shows them the code, so they can see what the actual code is. Because what they get is a verbal, and then they come back and they complain that, I[1712.41] Because what they get is a verbal, and then they come back and they complain that, I was told, or they said this. Well, I know what they were told, and I know what they understand. It's not like reading a Chinese fortune cookie with three words. These things are long, they're complicated. Kathy, you and I have looked at a number of these things for years, just on sidewalks. People aren't going to get it. And so please, let's take a look at the civilians, and then let's do what we can to assist them, because they walk out of here with their head, you know, kind of shaking around. But I really think that they are entitled to get a printout of what they're asking for. I just don't think that's a large expense. I think they need to know what the pertinent codes are.
If it's in the code, we should be able to clip it and print it.
Well, people have a hard time going through our book. Because they kind of don't put everything in the same area, because we have a lot of dangling stuff. So with that, good luck on this.
Working on that, too.
Pardon?
I say we're working on that.
Well, it's just like the tree ordinance. You can build a six-foot fence, wood, on your property line, as long as it doesn't get to the corner, da-da-da-da-da-da. And you are looking at the narrowest portion of the lot, which is then the front, and that's where the setback starts. And you can build that fence, except between April and August, when you go to a separate section, because the city has to clear the oak tree for nests. Right? Really? We've got to be better than that.
Hard to find all the rules.
We've got to be better than that. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this agenda item? If not so, I'll close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to the commission. Are there other questions on the resolution and the exhibit, which is, I guess the exhibit is the proposed, what we're, what we're asked to propose to the City Council for their approval?
Right.
But the resolution also sort of a header on that.
Yeah. The recommendation is that you adopt the resolution to recommend to the council the ordinance.
Okay. Is, is the resolution itself a legal document, or just, just the draft ordinance?
Yeah, the resolution is, is, it's a thing that you would, if you so choose, adopt. It's a legal document.
Okay. I would ask then that on attachment A, page one, the last whereas, it says statutorily exempt from sequo pursuant to section 15283. In the whereas above it, it identifies what that means. It's California Code of Regulations Title 14, and I'd like to see that stuck in the last whereas. There's room for it without bumping the pages.
We also...
But I find things like that as I read this, and I say, section 15283 of what?
Yeah, right, of the California Code of Regulations. For what it's worth, it's also important that we should probably change that, because that's holdover from another document. This isn't a regional housing needs determination, so what we should do is copy and paste section three of the ordinance in place of that recital.
Section three of the ordinance.
Which is on page 12. In other words, the recital that we were just looking at on page one refers to the fact that regional housing needs determinations made by HCD and SCAG are exempt from sequo, which is true but irrelevant. This ordinance is an ADU ordinance. The sequo finding that I wrote in section three speaks to ADU ordinances, so we should put that in the reso.
Make that one of the wherases?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Second? And then the same for section two on page two of the reso.
Section two...
Which is the state written-out sequel finding.
Is the text amendment, you mean.
On page two of attachment A.
Oh, page two of attachment A, sorry.
Section two, the Planning Commission's recommendation on the sequel finding. Here, too, it refers to regional housing needs determinations, which is, again, true but not relevant to this ordinance.
And so you would change section two to read more like section three on page 12?
Correct.
We have to do that twice in attachment A?
The other option would be strike the recital, strike the last recital entirely and just have it be in section two. That works, too. And it's perhaps simpler.
That would be simpler for me. Yeah? Did everybody get that?
No.
Okay. We're looking at attachment A.
So...
Page one, the last recital, the last whereas. And, and on attachment A, page two of two, section two. Both refer to the same topic, or should. And what Matt is saying is, section three on page 12 of exhibit A, at the end of the proposed new ordinance, modified ordinance, environmental determination, that that be put in place of section two on page two, and that the last recital, or whereas, be dropped from page one.
Correct. And the reason is that the sequel findings don't need to be stated twice, and...
Right.
But they do need to be correct.
And the recital directly above it, at least does show where the two, where the two places in state law and regulations show up for sequo. We throw the word sequo around a lot, and I'm afraid a lot of the people that may watch these proceedings don't, don't know where to find it if they want to. So that would be good.
Agreed.
Okay?
That's a good catch. Thank you.
So that's a change?
Yeah, a change. On exhibit A now, the, the proposed draft ordinance, the second recital, third line, as, as I read at least the five purportedly relevant to ADU pieces of legislation, one of the other things they do besides amend 65852.2 and point 22, is they add 652 point, 65852.26, which is one of those dastardly notwithstanding paragraphs.
Yes, I believe...
26 comes, I think it's out of AB 881, but it may be out of AB 8670, or one of the others. I don't remember.
Yes. I forget, I want to say it's 68, but it might be 671 or 587.
Yeah.
65852.26 is the piece that Mr. Daddy was referring to, that allows a qualified nonprofit to sell separately an ADU and the primary unit without subdividing the lot. As noted, that's an option, not a requirement, and we don't recommend adopting it.
It's an option the staff recommends the city not take at this time.
Correct. So if you, if you choose is the...
By, by choosing not to include it in the ordinance, we're still conforming with dot 26. But is it necessary to include any reference to 26?
I see no reason to include it, because the city's not choosing to exercise that option provided in state law. We don't quote all state laws that apply.
Okay.
We're only quoting what we're relying on.
All right. That sounds fine.
So I, I would recommend not citing 26. And it, Mr. Daddy may well be correct.
It may come back again.
Next year or the year after, it might be, the option might be deleted. The same thing, exact same thing happened with JADUs. The bill was two years ago, adopted 65852.22. JADUs, optional. This year's bill got rid of the optional. So we might be seeing the future. But this one is a rather, this is a rather significant departure from the whole concept, so the legislature may not go that far. But whether they will or won't is a, is a question of political realities and political wills that none of us can answer in this moment.
And the natural expansion of state government.
And, and the, also the reality is, it's going to be decided, all of this is decided based on communities that look nothing like Ojai. This is decided based on the politics of San Francisco and the urban Los Angeles region, and how that politics feeds into Sacramento's politics. And those are the, those are the communities for which the ADU laws are written. The rest of us are just stuck with it.
Okay. The fourth recital on that same page, next to the last line, says affordable housing including via accessory dwelling units. Should we say and junior accessory dwelling units there? Because we are in fact including those in the ordinance now.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
That just goes in the next to the last line. And page two and three.
Do we even allow JAD units now?
No. None are allowed at the present.
But for this law, we will, starting in January.
Yeah. Starting in January 1st, we have to.
We're not liberalizing, we're actually incorporating.
We're, we're getting dragged along with our heels dug in.
Yes.
Just a little housekeeping when we get to actually printing the, the actual thing. 10-21709B definitions. We picked up all the quotes, but now we've got very inconsistent indent in all the, in all the definitions. It, it actually, this is... Page two, three, and four of exhibit A, I actually find the large indent, that is from items 10 through 22, to be easier to read than the no indent in items one through nine.
We can adjust as you wish.
Yeah, I mean, these, these...
I'd say it's just housekeeping when we get to the actual document.
And for the other piece to bear in mind is that the code that shows up online, and the code that shows up in the printed books, is formatted by the codifier. So...
Oh, okay.
They don't take this and insert it. They take the text and then, and adjust it.
So the, the...
It may not match this exact format.
The copy of the code that one finds on the city website was not created by the city?
No, no. Created is not the right verb. The code that's on the website...
Was not formatted by the city?
Correct.
Okay.
They must follow the city's use of AB, AB1, AB2. All the, all the letters and numbers have to be exactly right. But the indenting is done by the codifier, not by the city.
Okay. On page four, item C1, C1 and C2 read slightly differently. I think C1 should say accessory dwelling units, not unit, the way C2 reads. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. On the, on the table A, this is page six. Did everyone find the, the revised discussion with note three for maximum floor area size of unit?
This is the...
Yeah. That, that row on maximum floor area. I, I think what it means, I think what it means is, for a one-bedroom ADU, the maximum is 850 square feet, or 50% of the primary, whichever is larger?
My read of it is slightly different.
Because we can't, we can't ban something smaller than 850.
Correct. So if you had, if you had a, a house that was 1,000 square feet, and you wanted an attached ADU, you know, an expansion out the back, it's a 1,000-square-foot house, so our rule is 1,200 or half the existing habitable area, whichever is littler. So a 1,000-square-foot house means you get a 500-square-foot ADU. But the new law says that notwithstanding our size limits, you have to allow at least 850 for a one-bedroom, or 1,000 for two or more bedrooms. So this 500, so...
So it's 800 or 50%, whichever is larger? Eight, 850 or 50% for a one-bedroom, 1,000 or 50%, whichever is larger for a two-bedroom or larger, attached?
For houses that are smaller than 850 doubled and 1,000 doubled. In other words, the 850, let me state that again, perhaps, planner. The protection for 850 for one-bedrooms and 1,000 for two or more bedrooms only applies if 1,200 or half the house is a constraint. So in my example of 1,000-square-foot house, our code says you can only have a 500-square-foot ADU, but the state protects you for up to 850 if it's one-bedroom, or 1,000 if it's two-bedrooms. So with a 1,000-square-foot house, you could do unattached ADU that's two bedrooms at 1,000 square feet, notwithstanding our 50% code limit, because the state protects ADUs with two bedrooms up to 1,000 square feet.
Right. So, so mathematically, it's equivalent to saying 850 or 50%, whichever is larger, or 1,000 or 50%, whichever is larger, depending on how many bedrooms there are in the ADU?
I think that's yes. I think that's correct. Although if you had a...
Up to a maximum of 1,200. Can we still, we can still set the 1,200 limit, but we can't, we can't set the 50% limit if it's smaller than 850 or 1,000.
For the one or the other, yeah, exactly. That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make... I've been reading this stuff for too long, and I'm getting bleary.
And that's one of the realities. I realize the notwithstanding piece is not the cleanest of languages, but it solves the reality that the state has said, regardless of your rules, that's protected, and that's protected. So rather than writing a rule that lays out all the possible options, we write the rule and the exception, so that we, we can deal with everything. Because if we wrote out, this is allowed, that's not allowed, that's allowed, that's not allowed, we might miss something. Whereas if we write a rule and then write the exception that we're forced to accept, then everything's covered.
The, the thing that concerns me, and, and this is back to what Mr. Daddy said about people showing up at the desk in front. You can read a rule, but if you don't know where all the notwithstanding paragraphs are, you don't really know what the rule is.
That's true, and I think that speaks to some of the larger challenges. One is, we have to be very careful and clear in our interactions with persons at the counter. You may not be able to leave an interaction with the, at the counter, and know for sure what you can do. Mr. Daddy, Mr. Wyrick are right. We have to give you the code, and if we aren't now, we should be. Give you the code, give you the rule, but figuring out exactly how the rule applies may take a longer conversation than 10 minutes at the counter.
Yeah.
But the planner at the counter should offer to schedule, hey, you know, your, your site's complicated. How about we schedule a meeting, and let's talk through it? And I assume that's what staff already does, anyway. To connect folks to more than you can do in that...
The totality of the rule.
Right. More than you could do in the, hey, can I do this? Well, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Because it will depend on their current situation.
But in this case, I mean, this is all within the ADU ordinance. So if somebody's interested in building an ADU, they need to look at the ordinance. It's their responsibility to do that, and this is all together, it's all in one place. So, good.
Exactly. And we've, we've, we have tried with this ordinance, the commentators, particularly Councilman Wyrick, are very correct. There are some problematic definitions elsewhere in the code.
I, I get that, yeah.
Yeah, we can't fix it all in one night.
We're not fixing that tonight.
I would not stake my life on everything that has to do with ADUs being in this section.
And it's entirely possible that not...
May not be true.
That not everything is there.
But it's close to it.
Most of it, if not nearly all of it, is, is here.
Yeah. Yeah. But certainly what we're talking about here in terms of square footage, it's all here. The, the exception to the rule, it's all here. It's all in the same place, and I just...
And thank you for the, the format, which we had talked about months ago. We called it the San Luis Obispo format, but basically where you've got each, each option, and it's just easy to look at all of it.
Yeah.
This is a different table from what we were talking about then. That was land use tables.
Yeah, I know, but it's kind of a similar format where you can actually look at everything and not keep flipping pages and...
Right.
Similar.
On, on page nine, the note four, this is along the lines of what Commissioner Lottis was talking about before with the subsection L. Could we say subsection M, M italicized, and say of this section in note four? Otherwise, I'm not sure. People might go searching for subsection M, not knowing where.
It, there's no harm in adding it. It's implied. Subsection refers to this section, but certainly we can add it. That's easy.
Steve, would you mind saying what you just, the change you just made?
It's in note four.
Yeah, I'm down to it for, but...
Yeah. In compliance with subsection M of this section.
Of this section.
And italicize M so that it looks like the M that you find over on page 11.
Yeah, got it.
Is independent? Got that? All right. That's all, that's all my, my questions. Are there...
I have one.
Great.
Thank you.
On page seven of 14, attachment A, so we're still doing the, if you have a guest house, you can build an ADU, but if you have an ADU, you can't build a guest house?
That's the current policy choice that staff hasn't, hasn't proposed changing. The commission could, of course, choose to change it.
Yeah.
Or recommend, rather, to council to change it.
I'd like to see it changed, because it makes no sense to me that you can...
I know.
That you can have one or two, depending on the order in which you build them.
I agree.
I agree. I think we kind of mentioned that last time, briefly, but... I think we kind of mentioned that last time briefly, but I think you should be able to both.
But the rationale for that needs to be explained because otherwise, otherwise-
The rationale for it, as I understand it, is more or less history. Our prior ordinances before the switch from second units to accessory dwelling units forced a hard choice, guest house or A D U, never both. Then in twenty seventeen's amendments or sixteen's amendments, the requirement to allow an A D U in certain contexts was added, and thus we had to grant an exception to our no both guest house and A D U rule because if you had, and that's the middle two columns-
Made the smallest exception possible.
Right. We made the narrow, exactly. We made the narrowest exception possible, preserving the prohibition on both the guest house and A D U as much as we could, and, and we can still preserve it in, in, in the cases that are left, but we made, whether to lift it further or instead it is one or the other, or even allow both is a choice, is a broader policy choice. It's, of course, within your power to recommend to the council.
Well, whether, whether we have both a guest house and an A D U or only one or the other, anyone building either one still has to meet setback requirements, lot coverage requirements, separation between buildings for fire safety, and all of the rest of that, correct?
The guest house has to meet all of that. The A D U has to meet most of that.
It has some special rules, but, but the rules are still in those categories and they have to be met.
They have to be met as applicable.
Right.
Yeah.
A D Us are protected, guest houses aren't, in short. And that reality means that for, to a certain extent, we're not seeing as many guest houses come forward because at this point, if you add a kitchen, you get massive special protections. So why would you not add a kitchen if you're proposing to build a guest house? The reason that this was different before was because there was a significant problem of people building a guest house and then adding the kitchen on their own, converting it to an A D U, before A D Us were protected. Now they're mostly protected.
But now with the second unit compliance program, that could be done, right?
You could legalize it if it was built within a certain window, yes. So before July something of fifteen, if you had built it before June twenty-third, twenty-fifteen, you could legalize it with some rules and regulations.
Could convert it by right or some such?
Right. We allowed, if you previously illegally converted and made an A D U without a permit for June twenty-third, twenty-fifteen, and you meet the requirement set forth in the second unit compliance program guidelines and in subsection K, then you can legalize it.
Okay. And if you have a guest house right now that you want to convert, is there a restriction on your ability to convert it to an A D U?
It, so if you have-
Not the state law said-
If you have a guest house that exists now and you want to convert it to an A D U, that's existing legal space in an existing legal accessory building, so yeah, you can convert it.
You can do that by right today.
Unless you have another A D U, thank you.
Oh, unless you have another A D U.
Because you only can have one.
Right, you get one A D U, or one, A D U or junior A D U, pick one, under the new law. Today's law is one A D U. So if you have a guest house now that you built legally, that was legal construction, you got a permit for your guest house, and you want to convert it to an A D U by adding a kitchen, that's legal today. There are some rules, but it's legal. That's the fourth column in this table.
And, and if you wish to add a new A D U instead of touching the guest house, that's legal?
Right. That would be a new detached A D U. That would be the first column.
But once you convert that guest house, you can't build another guest house under the current code.
Under our current code, exactly. If you convert the guest house and into an A D U, then you're, then you're fixed on guest houses. You couldn't add a new guest house.
And that's what we're-
But if it was the other way around, so if you, so to use that example, if you have a guest house today and you build a new detached A D U, then you get to have both a guest house and an A D U.
Right. And if you do it in the other order, you can't do it.
What it does is- Correct. It privileges current guest houses, and the reason is that historical reason that we only opened it as much as we had to in twenty seventeen's amendments or sixteen.
I'd like to see us open it the rest of the way.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, because the, the rest, all the rest of the building, the fire and safety and lot coverage and all the rest of that still has to be met. Yeah.
That's your choice.
And we're saying some people get two buildings in the back and some people get one, depending on the order in which they built the buildings.
You can change it as you wish, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't need my approval.
So that would be a modification to table A in the role called, in the row called guest house?
What page, Steve?
This is page seven of fourteen.
Okay.
The bottom row is called accessory structure, the one just above it is the guest house, where it says not one of each in several places.
Right here, yeah.
What would you like to set the rule as?
Well, in that first one, for example, where it says new detached accessory dwelling unit, I would, I would like to have that cell read, each legal lot may have a guest house, under the restrictions of ten to seventeen oh five.
And an-
And an accessory dwelling unit, or, or just, or, or just delete everything after ten to seventeen oh five. Says you're allowed to have one without, without regard to whether there's an A D U.
Or not.
Yeah.
That's true.
Well, I don't agree. I don't agree.
You don't agree.
No.
You think this is making things too dense?
Yes, yes. I am, I am of the mind that we have to do what the state requires us to do, but that we move slowly, so.
Is there anything in state law about A D Us versus guest houses and how many of each you can have?
State law protects certain A D Us. There are no protections for guest houses.
I mean-
And the state codes are silent on guest houses.
I, I mean, unless we, you know, I just, I just, I don't like doing this kind of like on the spur, on the fly, because maybe there's something that would be okay in terms of larger sized lots or something like that, but I, anyway, I just, I just, I just am reluctant to jump in.
Setbacks and separation.
Lot coverage.
And lot coverage and all of that.
And the guest house would have the regular setbacks, not the amended setbacks.
I, I-
Exactly.
We're liberalizing so much that I'm, I'm just reluctant to do it on the fly. That's all, that's-
There, there was an interesting article in the A A R P magazine this month, and they talked about, about the best places for retirees and people who are over, you know, sixty-five, and of those cities that they recommended, one of the main things was doing away with single-family resident zoning so that you could have more than one unit, which is what basically California's doing, and I think they had three units per lot. You know, we always assume that everybody's going to just go out and rent these for a ton of money, but that, that's not necessarily the tru, the truth. There's a lot of older people around on fixed income and they need places to live.
Well, I just, you know, I like my neighborhood, and I like the character of my neighborhood, and we're not, you know, we're doing a lot of things that may substantially change the character of neighborhoods like mine and yours.
I've always lived in very dense neighborhoods and I love them.
Over the next, well, I'm, but I'm saying I like it and I like my neighborhood the way it is, and I think a lot of people would, would say the same thing, and I just think that we need to move very carefully and slowly, and because once something's built, it's there and we can't take it out, and so I think the density issue is, is something, particularly when we don't have parking associated with it, and we are going to be driving cars into the future. There'll probably be electric cars, but we're not going to bicycle everywhere. We're going to have cars, and so I, I am a voice for, I know what we have to do, and I agree, we've got a terrible housing problem in California. I don't, I think this is actually poor planning to address the problem of affordable housing. Because, because just like Matthew Summitt, the attorney, city attorney says, this was all written for areas not like Ojai. So I think we have to be particularly careful because this wasn't written for us. This was not written with any kind of community like this in mind whatsoever. So, that's, that's right.
I have a-
So, could I just-
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
We went ahead and, you know, as, as it reads, it says each legal lot may have a guest house under the restrictions of section ten point seventeen, or ten, ten dash two point seventeen oh five. That is the, that's guest homes. That are the, those are the standards. So it's basically referring back to the standards for guest homes. In the very beginning of the standards, it says guest houses are subject to the approval of design review and a conditional use permit. So even if we peel away some of these restrictions, it's coming before this commission for consideration.
Okay.
Okay.
So it has a good filter. Yeah. And I was going to suggest if we felt like we weren't ready and we didn't have enough time to further discuss that, maybe that could go with the recommendation that we make at the end where we said, you know, when we, when it comes time to do our housing element, that we do a further study on the multiple units on a property, and maybe that's when we do guest houses.
I'd be fine, I'd be fine with that. That would be-
And that would give us more time and we could come back and do it with the housing-
Yeah, we may want a minimum lot size imposed.
Would that be the time to do it with the housing element, even though it's not technically a house?
Well, if we've got design reviews and C U Ps for guest houses already, that's, that's a pretty significant level of review, in my opinion.
Correct. Limitance test is pretty high, absolutely, with a condition use permit.
Yeah, and Lucas is right, Mr. Steve is right. Guest houses don't count for arena purposes. But it's still, the housing element is when we're looking at single-family residences, what's allowed, not allowed, and that's also going to be tied. Our general plan update will be updating the housing element and the land settlement at the same time. So we can, it would make sense to-
Maybe we can, yeah. It gives us a little more time, knowing that it's coming up-
I would, I'd be fine with that, along with the, the idea of doing more, whatever we said, looking for an overlay zone allowing additional, additional A D Us and so forth. Because with a larger lot, that may, you know, I could end up being, being okay with that. I just want to-
You could have a family compound.
Look at it more deeply.
Right. We don't want to make a mistake, and if we know that in the near future, we can give it a little more thought, I'm okay with that, too.
All right. Well, let's, let's take a straw poll here. What I would propose to do is in that row on table A, in columns one, two, five, and six, that we truncate the wordage after ten dash two point seven oh, seventeen oh five. So that where it says, or an accessory dwelling unit, not one of each, that, that be deleted in those four. In the third column, new attached accessory dwelling unit solely by conversion of interior space, I would, I would propose to delete the sentence that says after an A D U is approved, then a new guest house is prohibited. And the same for column four. That would be my proposal.
I would agree with that.
I would agree. Right, streamlines it.
It simplifies the language. It's still, we're still have requirements for design review and C U P.
Yep. So we have a good filter.
Yeah.
At least for now.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And my response to Commissioner Lottis's concerns, and it sounds like they've been assuaged a bit, is even if this becomes legal to do and the people need to bring, bring a guest house here for approval-
A new guest house?
A new guest house.
Any existing guest houses or?
I mean, thus far historically, evidence shows we don't have that much building. It's expensive to build.
Not everyone's going to do it.
You know, and I understand even if one person does it, it may put the neighbors out and it'll feel like too much density, you know, just for those immediate surrounding. But in terms of a whole lot of people coming to want to build the, build the, even just build an A D U, I mean, let's hope it does, and, and, you know, there's, it's another comment I have in a little bit before we close this discussion out, you know, it's just expensive to build an A D U, and, and, you know, how many realistically are going to rebuild?
Well, you know, the, it's becoming, there's, there's no additional permit required other than building permit, and the rents, the rents look very, well, I mean, I'm talking about an A D U.
Oh, an A D U, yes, right.
So, so I think, I think, I think the, my guess would be the future for A D Us are going to significantly change because you can build it, you can rent it, that's going to look pretty attractive, I think.
Yeah, it's more affordable to begin with because you're-
Possibly.
And the rents may not be very affordable.
Design review.
Because there's no, there's no control on that whatsoever.
Yeah, we don't know where that's going to go. A lot of homeowners don't want someone else living on their property. That's why they're homeowners. They don't want extra people on their lot.
But, but anyway, back to the point here. No, I know, I think it's four to one, so.
Yeah.
I've already, I've already made my case.
Yeah.
And I lost.
It's at least three to two.
It's okay.
It may not be four to one.
But we said, let's bring it, we could bring, bring it back further when we do the housing element. We could re-explore if we needed to.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I would always re-explore, of course.
Okay, so we have that option.
I do have a-
Both worlds here.
I do.
So, so are we, are we going to change table A or are we not going to change table A?
I would like to.
I would like to.
I would like to also.
I would, too.
And I, I take a slightly different approach to it. I think you should be able to do what you want with your own stuff, as long as there's a reasonable set of rules that says what you have to do. And I think within setbacks and lot coverage and D R Ps and C U Ps, we have a reasonable set of restrictions. So I say for purposes of an overall recommendation, three to two, we're changing that.
I mean, I was still open if we had to down the road, come back during the housing element and visit it, but for now, I would say definitely. I go with the strikes.
And, and, and if there actually were something done in between now and when we get the housing element done, it's still going to come back to us for a C U P.
Exactly.
Any other changes or additions or anything?
I just have a, I do have a question on, sorry, I'm kind of, I wasn't very organized tonight. So page, this is attachment A, page three, guest house under eleven. Okay, so I'm kind of unclear about this. Guest house means living quarters, perant's habitable space, and of perant's having no kitchen facilities, including no cooking or prep areas, located within an accessory structure located on the same parcel. I don't, the guest house is an accessory structure, isn't it, or not? Or, I'm not sure why we have that part. A guest house means living quarters, having no kitchen, including no cooking or prep area, located in the same parcel with a primary dwelling in it. I guess I'm not sure why we have.
It says located within accessory structure, and if you go to page two, there's the definition of accessory structure.
Well, the difference is the accessory structure is only a toilet and sink, and the guest house is a full bathroom.
A guest house is a full bathroom, but it doesn't have a kitchen.
That's right.
A guest house, I guess I, it has to be located within an accessory structure, but can it be by itself as a guest house?
That is an accessory.
It is an accessory structure.
Either, in other words, it's within it or it-
Okay, so there's three categories there.
I think you could have a guest house that's the, that is the accessory structure.
Okay.
All four walls.
Okay.
Or you could imagine an accessory structure that had a guest house on one side and say a garage on the other.
Okay, okay.
I think that would also count as a guest house.
And I, I read it, I read it even further to say, when you're looking at a main, the main residence versus the accessory, this is again saying it's, it is a guest house. It is not the primary. It is simply an accessory, too. I think that's why it's, it's further identifying as an accessory structure, which then defines it previous to that, so. which then defines it previous to that. So.
So, we don't wanna say a guest house is an accessory structure with means, guest house?
I can, I can see where you're going here.
I don't know. It's just confusing to me.
And even the part about living quarters.
A guest house is a live, is an accessory structure with living quarters, having no kitchen, blah, 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 located on the same parcel with a primary dwelling in it. That, to me, would make more sense.
Is it considered a temporary living quarter? It's not?
Not necessarily, no.
It's under the CUP that you adopt conditions for it.
Yeah. But the, the definition of accessory, this says located within an accessory structure.
But it is an accessory.
And accessory structure is defined as either a habitable structure with no more than a half bath or a non-habitable structure. So, a guest house couldn't be inside one of those.
So, that's a fair point, and I think.
Language, yeah.
Part of the challenge here is that this guest house definition is similar to, but not the exact same as the overall guest house definition in, for title ten, which defines guest house as living quarters having no kitchen facilities, located within an accessory structure, located on the same parcel with the primary dwelling unit, occupied for the sole use of the members of the resident family, temporary guests or persons permanently employed on the premises.
Oh, there you go. That's the part I've been looking for.
Okay, so you're trying to have it parallel, the same words for now, so it, it can be changed in the future.
But it does also have conditions of approval on a guest house, 'cause it has a CUP.
And a DRP, too. Guest houses requires.
I wouldn't wanna make this very real different from what's in the other definition.
Depending on the size of the accessory structure, though.
But your definition still says, your, your alternate definition of guest house elsewhere in title ten still says located within an accessory structure?
Yes, it does. That, because.
But the definition of accessory structure by omission does not include anything with a full bath?
The reason there is that we've more narrowly defined accessory structure in this AD ordinance than the default title ten definition. The default title ten definition is as follows. Accessory structure, a structure that is physically detached from secondary and incidental two and commonly associated with the primary structure. For purposes of these zoning regulations, accessory structures and uses include detached garages, greenhouses, artists, studios, and workshops, and any other open-air enclosures, including gazebos and detached patio covers. We went with a more narrow definition than that definition for ADUs in order to ensure that a gazebo couldn't be converted to an ADU by saying that it is a physical structure, it's physically detached from secondary incidental two and commonly associated with the primary structure, and is habitable or non-habitable. And then the, the limit on kitchen size, which was tie, intended to tie back to the, this distinction between guest houses and accessory structures. Which also, I think, reflects some of our past policy choices about narrowing the impact of an ADU and a guest house. And admittedly, it's not terribly clear.
I'd like, I'd like to see a common definition throughout title ten.
I was just about to say that.
And if accessory structure does not allow, if an accessory structure cannot have a full bath, then a guest house cannot be inside an accessory structure.
Right.
That is definitely true. That piece needs to be adjusted.
Yeah, they don't mean the same thing. So, I agree.
I would, I would leave it to the city attorney and staff to, to rationalize those two definitions, but it would be good to have the same thing everywhere in title ten.
Exactly.
And have, have a guest house fit within the definition of an accessory structure, which it doesn't right now.
And you can bet that if somebody can just get a ministerial permit and put an ADU, they're not gonna build a guest house when they need a CUP and a design review permit unless they have money to burn.
Likely not, yeah.
Agreed.
It may make sense to drop the definition of accessory structure and drop the definition of guest house from this ordinance and just rely on the default standards.
That's fine. That, that at least is consistent throughout title ten.
Matt, although that's, that's, that default, that accessory, we don't have a default accessory structure.
We do have a default accessory structure definition in title ten.
Where?
It's in the code, in section ten two thirty-six oh two A two.
Oh, yeah, in the definition section, ten two thirty-six oh two.
Yeah, in the definition section, ten two thirty-six oh two A two. Um, it reads, "a structure that is physically detached from secondary and incidental two and commonly associated with the primary structure. For the purposes of these zoning regulations, accessory structures and uses include detached garages, greenhouses, artists, studios, and workshops, and any other open-air enclosures, including gazebos and detached patio covers." So, if we.
Does it say anything about the plumbing fixtures?
It has no, no distinction on bathroom size.
But that's why it was added to the ADU when you added it when we redid the ADU.
Seventeen amendments. We added it to draw these lines with guest houses. But the commission has just deleted most of that line, so it may, may not be worth maintaining.
And I'm wondering.
These separate definitions.
Ten two seventeen oh nine B, where all the definitions are, are all these terms already in ten two thirty-six oh two?
Some are, some aren't. Some are defined slightly differently.
Consistency.
For consistency, I'd, I'd like to ask that where the same term exists in ten two seventeen oh nine B and in ten two thirty-six oh two, that the wording be the same or that one refer to the other?
Otherwise, it's confusing.
Yeah, yes.
One of the things we're trying to straighten out here in title ten is inconsistent definitions and references.
I think that's certainly doable. Doing that is perhaps a larger project than we can do in this moment. The reason is that there's a decent amount of policy choices that are baked into the definitions. That's why the terms are separately defined three or four times, is because you have a default definition. Then, at some point, a one-off ordinance was done on one topic with a narrow definition.
For the purposes of this section, this term means X.
Which is why you'll see.
That's good, yeah.
This section begins with that exact phrase.
Yeah, it is. You're right. That's the lead in.
That's often why this is done, although I realize it doesn't, it, it creates confusion.
Okay, for now.
Yeah.
I, I would be fine.
We are, we do wanna do, we do wanna do an entire cleanup of title ten, so.
Right.
And I agree.
Maybe we can go back and revisit this.
I, I agree with that, and I promise you that that's gonna be coming, coming to you, certainly. Uh, this is a bigger discussion regarding the definitions, and, um, what, what was said earlier is true. There are, clearly, there are some inconsistencies, and I, I think every day I open the code and I look at something.
Yeah.
I scratch my head, and I keep losing more hair doing that, right? So, I think we need, I agree, I agree with you wholeheartedly regarding some of those issues. I think we probably need to have that discussion later, later on. But certainly, looking at these and making notes is, is important.
Well, no zoning code is perfect, and, and really, uh, I mean, the public needs to understand it when they come in, that there, it's reasonable to have a discussion with staff and talk, talk it over in terms of what, how this, how different sections apply to whatever they're thinking about doing. It's not, it's not just a, a total cut and dried thing.
It, it's, it's reasonable to expect any citizen who comes to the desk and is told something to respond, "where in the code does it say I have to do that, or I can't do that?" And we should be prepared to answer the question, so.
Agreed. And putting it back together, it may be best if we just drop these two definitions, just those two, particularly 'cause I, I, I don't, I see the point of not adding a definition that makes things more inconsistent, at a minimum.
It's that number eleven and number two are not consistent within this section.
Right. At a minimum, I would strike number eleven. I don't see a reason, particularly now that we've adjusted the rules for guest house, or you have, it doesn't make sense to define guest house in this section. It just refers back to ten two seventeen oh five, which table A already does.
Strike it altogether?
I would strike eleven entirely.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And that solves.
The problem.
A portion of it. Now, the accessory structure definition is still different than the broader definition in title, the rest of title ten, but it might make sense to defer that fixing to a little later date. But let's not make it worse, so let's drop eleven.
All right. Sounds good. So, are we, are we through the, the sixteen pages, you think?
I think we, we should just go look through this to see.
Attachment A, page one, we had reference to CCR, and you were going to fix section two. Oh, that's right. The one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh, the seventh site you were gonna drop.
Right.
On page one of two, and you were gonna modify section two.
Yes.
To reflect section three on page twelve.
Right, okay. Uh, on page one, the, the last site, including via ADUs and JADUs, did we add that in?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, on page three of fourteen, we're dropping definition number eleven.
Yes.
On page four, paragraph C one, unit becomes units.
Also on page four, uh, twenty-two towards the top, accepting rentals for the entire month of February.
Yes. Or we, or we could say, "accepting rentals for", oh, okay, "for the entire month of February". Okay, that sounds good. All right.
And then we have the other.
Page seven, we modified the guest house language in that row.
Right.
Page nine.
We had to add number, or E, letter E.
Oh, yes, right. On page nine of fourteen, we add in, in paragraph two E, or, I'm sorry, one E now, to add words that include fire safety.
Yeah, building and fire codes.
Yes. C, add.
Title nine.
Add a reference to building fire codes in other sections that's adopted in title nine.
Right.
Citing the subsections of title nine that adopted those.
And, um.
We had one more on that page, too.
Oh.
Number four.
Number four, subsection M, italicized of this section.
And subsection. And two, subsection two, moving the intent over.
Yeah, re-tab.
And italicize correctly.
We had a.
Page eleven, we struck in L three. Did we strike? Does not need to be independent?
Yes, we did.
And the same fix, uh, subsection L five C on that same page for February.
Accepting rentals for the entire month. Thank you. I've been working on that for two years.
The February issue, yeah.
The thirty-day issue.
I remember you saying that before.
Um, and then on page twelve, paragraph two A, you said up to twenty-five percent of the number of existing multifamily dwelling units.
Yep.
Yeah. Got that.
Any other changes that anyone recalls that we recommended making?
Are we moving section three?
Oh, section, I, I didn't think you were going to remove section three.
No, no, it's copy and paste.
We're going to copy it into section two in the header of the resolution.
That's correct. When I said move, it wasn't remove, but move, meaning copy and paste.
It still needs to be here.
Copy over.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Good.
All right. If we're all happy, can we have a motion to recommend this to, to, oh, to approve the resolution recommending the draft ordinance to city council?
Am I able to make comments after this motion?
We'll have discussion of the motion. If there's something that you'd like to change now, we should talk about it and include in the motion.
It's not in motion. It's just, no, it's, uh, just about the whole discussion. It's not about the motion.
So, a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion. All right, I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the resolution for accessory dwelling units in the text amendment TA nineteen dash zero seven with the.
As amended.
As amended. I think that's good.
I'll second that.
Very good. Any more discussion, Ray?
No, it's not about the motion.
Oh, not about the motion, okay. Could we have a roll call then, Sherri?
Powers?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quillisi?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
You could've voted no. It was okay.
I know, I know. It's.
All right, so we're finished with item two.
Well, I have a comment on item.
Okay, very good.
That's what I wanted to say, 'cause it, it's more of an, uh, I can be very detail-oriented, but I'm a generalist, so I like to see, you know, I always have a lot, big-picture view on things. And, um, I'm glad we're moving forward on the, these ADU resolutions and ordinances, and, um, I, I see the importance of ourselves and council, um, making decisions parallel to each other on agenda items that, that address the same topic. One of the reasons, and I agree with Mr. Daddy about taking time on things, but I also notice the way agenda items are staggered, that things take way too long. So, in, in this case, I'm gonna try to interpret my notes here I made. You know, when I think about AD, an ADU ordinance, I also think about, uh, what, what Commissioner Lottis brought up, you know, zoning overlays and larger, larger lots, being able to build more than one. Now, I get these are all parts of different, you know, housing elements. Some of what I'm gonna say is even title nine. But they're still all connected, even though they're different discussions. So, the reason I'm, I, I wanna speak these things is 'cause I feel that, um, they need to be all discussed at once. So, when things get decided upon, we can actually make, um, proactive changes to, and the residents are clear on what they can do, and it benefits them as, as much as we can. So, you know, for instance, I wrote down, you know, the, the lot coverage for, for larger properties, some type of thing like the SLRI for pilot projects. So, when ADUs, these new laws come in for ADUs, alternative materials and types of structures can be, be vetted, and there's a process to do that. It also allows, whereas I, I agree with you, Chair Quillisi, about how you said you feel people should be able to do what they want on their own property. I also feel there needs to be a process, like the SLRI or, or something similar, where neighbors get to weigh in. 'Cause neighbors may, we, we need to respect that we're in a community, even though you may own.
The end of my sentence was, "if it doesn't bother the neighbors."
Yes, and there needs to be a process for that conversation to happen. So, I, I guess what I'm, I'm sharing is, is I, I'm wanting the whole city leadership and commissions to move into more of a, a systems approach and holistic look at all of these topics, so we can address, uh, fire-safe and earthquake-resilient housing, um, type structures that are currently aren't permitted, but they're allowed to be built as an ADU, and we have all that in place, and it all relatively comes, uh, into legalities at the same time.
I'm not sure you were correct in that last statement. I think, I think that an ADU still has to meet title twenty-four. Is that right?
Presently, yes.
The current.
Under your current law, an ADU must beat the state building code as amended by the city through its local amendments, yes.
And you're looking at, I believe, the, within the building code, the alternate methods and materials portion.
Yes.
That a building department has the right to approve something or not based on that it meets health and safety.
Correct.
Welfare requirements.
Yes, of course.
But isn't your typical something in the building?
So, and, and that's drilling down a little more specific than I want to, but you're correct. It's more, I'm more addressing that all of these things get. It's more, uh, I'm more addressing that all of these things get spoken of at the same time versus one's an agenda item, then the next portion comes up six months later, and then it takes five years for someone to, to build something.
Maybe we should have a joint meeting with the BAB and-
And city council.
And city council, well, that would... Sounds a little unwieldy, but-
Well, well, you know-
You're speaking about vision.
Fifteen people plus staff and the city attorney.
I'm talking, yeah, 'cause I'm talking about, I'm talking about, you know, it fits into the, our general plan rewrite, but an overall vision for our city and our culture that we're always looking to versus piecemealing everything. And things being left out, or, or the time span just takes so long. And, and, um, I just feel that's, uh... It's a dysfunctional part in our policymaking, that I'd, I'd like to have a conversation.
With the new general plan update.
If I can, um, just interpret what you're saying and your frustration, I think it's that, that we tend to get bogged down in the minutia of legalese, if you will. Or how the thing is written, and we're missing the vision statement, which is the whole crux of the issue. And I think we've been saying this for as long as I've been on the planning commission, that we need a big picture, and we need a vision, we need to talk about what our, our... Community vision is for growth and change, and where we expect to be in five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, that, that we never get to do those things. And those are the things that are the whole reason why you go through the minutia of how you get there, and we're kind of doing it backwards.
The minutia is the how, and the vision is the why.
First of all, I, I, I want to just correct Commissioner Corbin, I'm not feeling frustrated. I'm just presencing something I feel that's missing.
Okay, well, I'm frustrated.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not frustrated.
I've been frustrated from day one about that.
The minutia is needed, the legal is needed, it's all needed. But, but it, it's more about the organization of how all of these topics are laid out. Um, even, even, you know, another, another part of this ADU conversation to actually address, how do we make it affordable? 'Cause I mentioned this in our last meeting, like, that's the guiding light of all this, we, we're, we're doing these ordinances to create affordable housing. So, even having a, um, you know, Ca- Commissioner Nolan, Nolan and I have talked about, having a library of, of, you know, pre-permitted designs, what can we do to really, uh, create some kind of system and an organization where we can lower the cost of someone being able to, uh, build an accessory dwelling unit? And, and to address that and not forget that, and have that, have that being planned out in parallel to all these other topics. So, I hope that was clear, but-
I think the general plan update is probably-
Yeah, but that's a three, I, I, not a but, I understand, we're gonna work on the general plan update, that's, that's, you know, a three-year process. But the topics I just brought up could be a one-year process, if everything was discussed at the same time.
We are looking at about an eighteen-month, uh, expedited process on our general plan.
Oh, that's even better.
Okay.
Cut in half.
And we started last week, or this week.
Okay.
We've already started.
Oh, they already started, nice.
So, that's a general statement I have and, and suggestion that I would like to see, and I think maybe a joint meeting with the BABs and the city council is, is a good idea. Or a workshop or, or something to really make-
Maybe you can pass along to the city council a question of, does the city council think that would be a good idea to get together with the BAB and the planning commission and-
We can discuss that under item number four.
Right, for our joint meeting.
Item number four.
Yeah, good, let's, okay.
So, thank you for indulging me on that.
All right, item four, Title ten cleanup, we're back into the land use tables, two, 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 four, two, six. Sure, let's, uh, let's take five. Back on the record, and we'll take up item three, Title ten cleanup. And the recommendation is continued discussion of the cleanup of the city code, land use tables and definitions, which in this context means, folks, that we'll start at page eleven of fourteen. But, uh, before we do that, Mr. Fiss, is there anything you'd like to add before we begin the detail?
Just very briefly, we're picking up, uh, where we left off on November twentieth, uh, we had, uh, skipped a couple of meetings to address a couple issues, animal keeping, uh, which we'll be bringing back on January fifteenth. And, uh, and ADUs, and those were taking up a lot of our time, so, um, with that, we'd like to, staff's recommending we move forward on page eleven of fourteen.
Could you get a little closer to your mic, please?
Sure, sure. Table two dash six, and I, there's, there aren't a lot of changes, we should be able to get through this in short order, and, um, and then talk about some other issues on, on the agenda. So, um, with that, I suggest we just start on at the top of, uh-
Top of two, six.
Two, six, page eleven of fourteen, and we can just have an open discussion.
Questions for staff, then?
I had a question, um, at the bottom, um, was its home, under residential use, is home occupation, it was-
Page number?
Uh, page eleven of fourteen, attachment A. Says it's, it was deleted, does that mean the whole, um...
No, uh, I deleted the reference and replaced-
Well, the reference was just, okay, I get it.
And replaced it with the correct reference.
Bad answer.
Deleted that text, art twenty-one.
Okay, good, all right, well, that was easy.
All right, you, you are, you've noted cemetery, um... Requires a CUP in the, oh, in the open space zone, but it's not, it's not allowed anywhere else, even though the existing Nordoff Cemetery is in a, is zoned PL.
That's correct.
Maybe that's something we need to recommend the city change.
Well, we could leave it as legal non-conforming in the PL zone.
Yeah.
In the event we, we... It's very unlikely, but, uh, to keep any other cemeteries from coming into the PL zone, which is pretty, pretty restricted. And, um, really just a question if, if the, um-
Alternatively, we could recommend to the city council that they rezone, that they rezone that as OS. To be consistent with the table.
Wouldn't you consider a cemetery to be PL?
To be public land?
It's a cemetery, everybody can be in it, it's for the public use.
And it is, uh, it is owned by the city, so...
Well, maybe we should, maybe we should put in CUP under PL. Not that anybody is gonna ask to put a cemetery in the backside of the Ohio Elementary School property.
Could we expand it?
We could do that, and there is, there is one use I don't recall seeing.
Hard to tell from the zoning map how big that piece of property is, yeah.
Let me, let me take a step back, and this kind of is, is making me think something through here. I don't see funeral home listed.
We don't have one in town anymore.
Don't have one in town.
Used to.
Yeah.
Um, we may want to-
Add it.
Consider that as a, as a use, however, uh, we'd also wanna consider, uh, crematorium at the same time.
That would be an adjunct to a funeral home, as far as I'm concerned, yeah.
Right.
Maybe it's not, that, what's your experience with that?
Um, my experience is that the modern crematoria are very low-key operations, um, very quiet and clean.
Not an adjunct to a funeral home, per se, it's a separate facility?
It could be, it could be either, either or.
They could be grouped maybe together.
We could say funeral home and, as one use, and then funeral home with crematoria, CUP, something like that.
Yeah? And where-
Personally have no problem with them, and, um, I know in, in other parts of the county, they are within commercial zones and adjacent to residential zones, both of them.
So, we would just-
Those are uses, but-
Okay.
We just need to find the right category, in other words, it's not gonna be on this table, right, correct?
Maybe in the C one, maybe in the C one zone?
C one, yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe when we-
Maybe industrial.
When we reformat these three tables into a single table, we should take that up. Because then we'll have all the zones-
Mm-hmm.
Right across the top, and we can, and we can put that in. I think it might be a good idea for the moment, perhaps, to add, uh, a couple of lines under recreation, education, and public assembly. One being funeral home and one being funeral home with crematorium, and, and just leave it blank for the moment.
And then re-categorize it.
And then we'll, we'll reconsider it when we have it all in one big table to look at. Would that make sense for everybody?
That would be fine.
You know, a question I have is, um, you know, there are uses like that, a crematorium. I, I don't know that I'd particularly be an advocate for adding it to the table, but, um, it does seem, and I had thought about this at one time, and I kinda forgot, but, um, it does seem like we could use the addition of a provision in these sections of the code that deals with uses about, um, about how to consider a use that's not in the table. And what the process would be.
I believe there is something in our, in our municipal code that use is not listed.
There is, okay.
So, there's kind of-
We do have a process for that.
There's a guideline or something.
It amounts to a director's exemption, in that the director is authorized to judge that something is a similar use.
Okay.
Is that, is that a fair way to state it?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
It's in there somewhere, I've seen-
But what's missing is, we don't have a way, uh... Well, I guess, I guess that would cover it, I was thinking there would be-
It's in-
Whether, there would be a way for the commission to look at something and say that it's similar enough to be certain, but you're saying the director would look at it.
There is something in there.
Director's exemption that we and the city council are notified of.
Find it? The current provision is in section ten, two, three, three, zero, three, that allows in subsection B, for the director to determine when a lea- when a proposed land use isn't listed in the table, whether it is or is not similar to other uses listed, and it provides for some findings for that determination?
Oh, perfect, okay.
The example I always use is, is, and, and kind of in an ironic fashion, is video stores. Because they, when they first popped up, no one knew what to call them.
Right.
Um, were they retail, did they need more parking or less because of their, their very nature? And then cities kinda got themselves into, uh, some pretzels logic, and then, and then they went away, for the most part, so...
Okay, uh, let's move on then to religious facility, you've got a note here, Joe. Says need to evaluate with respect to RLU-
Correct, the Religious Land Use-
IPA?
The Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which is what we've discussed previously about-
Right.
Not treating, uh, religious uses, um, in any lesser fashion than other similar assembly-type uses. In this case, for example, a, um... In this case, it's consistent, community center.
CUP for the OS zone, for example?
Uh, I'm, I'm just, uh, going down this section, a similar use might be a community center. It's a place of assembly, community center.
And there, the current table matches.
And there it matches. We, we would not, um, necessarily suffer a challenge in that section.
But, uh, school, public and private, school, college and university, that's all, it's permitted in PL. Uh, but you're not suggesting that, that religious facility have, uh, permits or CUPs or anything else in A or OS or- or anything else in A or OS or other zones at the moment?
At the moment, correct.
At the moment, okay.
That, that may be something where we, we come back with a standalone amendment, because it's such a, a big issue.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, on page 12, you've just changed the terminology from second residential unit to accessory dwelling unit.
Correct, and in light of today's conversation on ADUs.
We've lost the, lost the column heads, A, OS, and PL. So it requires a CUP in the agricultural zone?
Correct, which we would probably.
So if I have a, if I have a ranch, and I want to put an ADU on my ranch, I can't do it by right? Whereas if I have.
Well, not any, well, not anymore, even, even, even under the current code, a CUP, it would, it would have to be permitted. This would be invalid. Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Where in the current code does it require a CUP for an ADU?
It doesn't, it can't.
Doesn't, it cannot, this isn't, this should have been changed.
So we need to strike it?
So, so CUP should read P?
Correct. Back in whenever, when was it, 2017?
How about the others?
That should have been, and we would have to go through, as we adopt an ADU ordinance, go through the entire table and make sure that, really, ADUs should, ADUs probably shouldn't even be in the table. They're just part of the single-family use.
And that's an approach taken by some cities. Some put them in the table, some just have it as a, as their own separate ordinance.
Yeah.
But it is, as stated, both in state law and in the headers to table A, in the prior section, in the event of any conflict between any other portion of the code and 10, 2, 1709, the ADU ordinance we just rewrote, that controls. So here, the CUP requirement for the ag zone doesn't apply today.
Except it is in table A that we just recommended to the city council.
Right, you can have an ADU in the ag zone, but by right, not with a CUP.
Okay.
If you meet the rules.
Yeah, the first, the first line of table A has every zone except PL.
That's right.
Not every zone, but the other zones, yes.
All the IR zones, OS, A, VMU, C1, and BP, they're all there.
It exempts.
Everything except PL.
It also exempts the IR zones.
Oh, and the, oh, the IR zones, okay. Why would that be?
So we're saying that you can put an accessory dwelling unit in open space, then? Is that what we're saying?
No, open space isn't listed either, as I recall.
It is, it is in table A.
Oh, it is listed, yes.
Yeah.
And that was because there are existing single-family residences in the open space zone.
Oh, okay.
Recall that the other trigger for an ADU is an existing single-family residence.
So we should put a P, then, that it is permitted?
So, so that first line on page 12 should be Ps under A, OS, and PL, to be consistent with table A?
Not PL.
Not PL, we, we.
I'm not, I'm sorry, not PL.
Yeah, just the first two.
I think it's, I think it gets, I think this gets confusing, I think we should just.
Strike it, keep it separate.
Remove ADUs completely from the table?
Because, I mean, I'll say, because, yeah, you can do it in PL, but then you have to have the existing house, and I, I don't know.
I'm not sure you can do it in PL even with an existing, I guess you could convert it by right in the PL zone?
You have to go back under the.
If there's an existing house, you can, you could do it, right?
Only if it was an existing legally established single-family residence, which may or may not exist. I know of houses in the PL zone, but most of them aren't actually single-family residences.
Yeah, they're, they're commercial structures these days.
Some of them were.
All that stuff on West Ojai Avenue.
Many of them are now commercial structures.
Okay.
And we had said that in our earlier discussion to not, that PL was not included.
Right, right.
We need to preserve, keep it, keep it unique in our current policy.
Is, and our goal is ultimately to do this like the San Luis Obispo.
It doesn't have to.
Table.
Yes, we're going to reformat it to landscape, so that all of the zones are on one line, and then we've got many pages of all the uses, right?
I mean, it could be put in the use code.
I'm wondering now, the, the next one down on that page 12.
Yes.
Wireless communications facilities, are there, are there, because it used to say telecommunications, and so my first thought would be, okay, we've got a, an AT&amp;T central office over here, Ojai Avenue and Blanch. How do they communicate from there? I used to work in a telephone company, Cincinnati Bell. That's what's called a class five office, a class five office, your local central office.
Switching.
From there, you have communications links of quite large capacity that go to what's called a class four office, which is how you get across the country to somebody else. If we change telecommunications to wireless communications, are we somehow dropping the allowability of that central office to communicate with the next level in the network?
Well, we're making it legal nonconforming. We would make that, that AT&amp;T switching station.
I'm, I'm just thinking about the terms.
Correct, correct.
I know what, at least I think I know, when I see wireless communications facility, we're, we're talking about cell towers of some sort.
We also have, we also have another.
Those have to communicate with that central office, or some other part of the network to actually connect your call.
It's just 10 dash 14.
So I just want to make sure that, that we, if we're going to change something, because telecommunications, to me, is a broader term than wireless communications.
Correct.
And I just want to make sure that if we make the change, that we haven't made something nonconforming that used to be conforming.
By accident, correct, correct. We can look at that, so we'll.
It may make sense to, to have two lines.
But I was saying, two categories.
One line is the wireless communication facilities, which are governed by that whole wireless ordinance we did a couple of years ago.
Right, that 1714, right.
Which is chapter 14 of Title X, and then a separate line for.
Communications.
Communications facility, which be the current ADU.
It really, it's, it's actually already here, if you look above, it says public utility facility, CUP.
Perfect.
Oh, is that what that means?
Correct.
Yeah.
I would have thought a public utility facility was like the, the power substation over here. It could mean that too, I guess.
Could mean that also, that's why it would be a CUP. We don't know what that, what that might even look like in the future.
Okay, and the wireless requires a CUP in OS, but the public utility facility does not?
It's not allowed.
Yeah, wireless communication facilities are not allowed in OS.
No, no, wireless.
It says public.
According to this proposed changed table, wireless is allowed in OS with a CUP. Public utility facility is never allowed. Is that what we want to recommend?
I, I would say CUP all the way across, that's what I would recommend. On public utility.
Well, I don't, do we really want a wireless facility in an open space?
Public, under, I'm, I'm saying under public utility facility?
That should be permitted in all three?
CUP all the way across.
CUP all the way across.
A public utility?
You could have a power substation in the agricultural district, you're saying?
Well, it would only be by CUP.
By CUP.
Which means the commission could find that that would be incompatible with the zone.
Or a pump, pump station, or something like that.
Hey, CUPs across the room.
Yeah, but sometimes there's a reason for not, not having it at all, such as in the open space. I mean, I think, I, usually, we want to be very restrictive and protective of open space and not have any of this stuff out there.
The Casitas Water District has, has pumping facilities in various places.
Correct.
Is that, that also falls under public utility facility?
In, in my mind, that would fall under public utility facility.
And those are not allowed in OS or A?
Correct, which is, which is why I would recommend a CUP.
Well, the, the one that I'm most familiar with is out Grand Avenue a ways, and it's beyond gridly, it's outside the city limits. But there are, but there are pieces of ground here and there, in even potentially in residential areas.
Correct.
Much less ag areas, where there's a well. And, and so I'm not sure how this deals with that. Maybe you could enlighten us, Joe.
Correct, well, that's why I would suggest a CUP for, for those, for all of them, for all public facility utilities, public utility facilities.
Where, where, where would a well fit in on here if it were on school district property?
The school is not, well, depending on the school district's, the nature of the well's operations, it may be exempt from our code. School districts operating in their educational capacity, with a finding by the school board, are exempt from the city zoning code. A school district not operating in an educational capacity is not exempt from the city zoning code.
So a well that provides water to the school building, they can do without talking to the city?
Correct, but a well that they're merely selling for revenue, that would be under our zoning code.
Correct, the famous.
Or a well that is actually owned and operated by Casitas?
Right, although that would depend in part on, the other thing with Casitas is that there's an existing franchise agreement that was entered, entered into in the 60s between the city and then Cal-Am, or then Cal-Am Water, which transferred to Golden State Water, which transferred to Casitas. So Casitas has certain rights.
Still in a separate CFD.
Yeah, but still controlled by Casitas, so. There are certain rights for certain water facilities under that agreement that are also outside the zoning code.
I was referencing the presentation made at the last council meeting by the Fire Safe Council about potential wells on school district property.
Those being the, oh, right, the wells for, for emergency evacuation centers.
Of course, there's only, yeah, there's only two pieces of.
So I didn't want to write, I didn't want to write something in what we're speaking of now that would omit that, and then we'd have to revisit and revise, and.
Right, depending, yeah, no, that's a fair point. To me, a well like that for emergency water services, a public safety facility, which is permitted, the next lineup, in the PL zone, which is where the school district property is located.
Ah, okay. But you, Joe, you feel like the public utility facility should be CUP in A and OS?
I do.
Yeah.
I do.
That sound reasonable to everybody here? All right, and then we'll leave wireless communications as a separate thing?
Oh, in that one, the reference should be just 10, chapter 14 of Title X. It's not 10 dash 214? It's all by, it's not in.
It's 10 dash 2.14 et sec?
No, it's 10 dash 14.01 et sec.
Ah.
It's not in chapter two of Title X, it's in chapter 14 of Title X. Or you could just say chapter 14 of Title X.
Yeah. 10 dash 14, yeah, okay.
I like it. Oh, yeah, I like it.
Anybody see things that we want to visit on that same page, otherwise?
I just had one question about the wireless communication.
Yes, ma'am.
Facility, and I'm just kind of using this for an example. Several years ago, when we had the AT&amp;T tower that was going to go in off on Grant at the, at that time Lutheran Church.
On the church property, yeah.
Right, and basically, it did not go there, and I know that it ended up going on county property, but it was county ag property, and I know that's outside of the city limits, but it just kind of made me think, not that I'm pro putting any more towers, but did we want to open up ag?
One thing.
Option or not? And not that we have, that we don't have that much ag property, I realize that, too.
One thing to bear in mind is that our current wireless ordinance 10, 14, is a strong dispreference for ag and open space.
Okay.
But it also has the language, it refers back to the federal law. Federal law provides, with the right findings and the right context, with some narrowing elements, zoning is irrelevant. If a wireless facility, if a carrier can show that a proposed wireless facility, at the height at which it is proposed, is necessary and the least intrusive means to close a significant gap in the carrier's coverage, then we must allow it, regardless of our zoning. Now, that's a fairly narrow set, each of those things is tested. Each of those pieces of that test is subject to a test. It's a fairly narrow window, but I'm not sure that, my recommendation would be not, would be that that controls regardless of our tables, so we don't need to add a line to the zones we disfavor like ag and open space, unless you wish to make the policy choice to affirmatively facilitate wireless cell provision, in which case you have to go ahead and add it.
I'm, I'm okay with words, yeah.
Actually, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about that, that ag property up at the top of Daly. You could, you could put a wireless communication facility in there, if you went far enough up the hill, that would be no taller than the trees that are there. You'd probably never even see it. But according to the table, it's not allowed.
Because it's not allowed in ag, right.
Because it's not allowed in ag.
That's 1440, 1440 Daly.
But according to what Matt said, that proved to be the best place to put it.
Whichever one that, yeah, whatever the address was.
The planning commission will be seeing that.
Not the best place, the necessary.
The necessary place, right.
Very different standards.
True.
And for what it's worth, a carrier can rarely meet that showing, because we can usually find an alternative location to put it, particularly in a valley surrounded by county-owned land that's higher.
And it, and it's not allowed now, currently, so.
No, it's not allowed now.
Is that?
Well, it was not allowed as a telecommunications facility. We would recommend that it not be allowed as a wireless communications facility.
But that land above Daly, where those people want to build their house, I mean, above that, it's really unbuildable, and you see what they're going through to do what they want to do there, you know? Can you really use it as ag land?
Because that property.
There's trees all over it right now.
It was, it was an orchard up there.
But, yes, there are trees, but, but it's not kind of tamed.
It's not a wheat field, that's for sure.
Correct. It's pretty wild.
I think they removed most of the orchard trees, though.
I haven't walked Shelf Road in a while, yeah.
Because that property is likely to come to you as an application, I'd suggest we refrain from further comment on that exact site. It's going to come to you as an application, we shouldn't discuss it prematurely.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, let's look at page 13. You, on home occupations.
Added, added a reference.
You can't have a home occupation in your house on ag land? Unless it's an existing residence, then home occupation reverts back to the part of the table that talks about residential? How does that work?
We should, we should probably allow home occupations, probably make that a P.
Yeah.
I just hope that's making that a P.
I had that one marked also, yeah.
And single-family dwellings exist now, is there a problem with putting them on ag land?
It's a common, I'll defer to the planning staff, but it's a common prohibition to ensure that any time a developer buys ag land and wants to subdivide it into housing, that they have to come to the city for a general plan amendment and a zone change, forcing the opportunity to ensure the development, the new subdivision is appropriately designed.
Okay, maybe we should make that a CUP, then.
You have yet a higher standard if it's beyond CUP, because if, if it's allowed by CUP, then if a proposed application can meet the findings, we couldn't deny it, or defensively deny it.
But if they have to.
If it requires a zone change, then you can deny it, because zone changes are legislative.
Correct, it is, it is not, it's not uncommon to allow a, to allow a single-family home in ag land, in ag-zoned property.
We don't have evidence to.
Right, but according to the table, right now, it's not permitted.
Correct.
So do we just leave it blank, or do we have a provision in there?
Blank, it's not permitted.
I'd suggest making it P.
I mean, I'm going to remit one property back up again, but.
And we don't have very much ag land, I don't even know if we have any other parcels.
There's very little in the city, and.
That's one little piece, is all we have.
Well, let's, let's leave that for the next time the table comes up. Okay, farther down, page 13, we changed, I'm sorry, Ray?
But the home occupations, we're changing.
We're changing that to a P.
To a P in that zone.
So permit it all across the board there?
Yeah.
Although that is a little inconsistent if you can't have a house.
If there's, if there's an existing house, you can have a home occupation in it.
I suggest allowing single-family dwellings in the, in the ag zone.
Okay.
I, I suggest making it a permitted use. We have such little ag-zoned property.
Right.
And if someone...
Well, and if somebody wanted to put more than one, they'd have to start looking at the Subdivision Map Act or something, I guess.
If they wanted to subdivide it, create, create something with higher density, but, but if someone wanted to have a, field of, uh, grove of avocados in the ag zone and their, their home on a five-acre lot, for example, it's probably not a, a problem.
My family built a home on a one-acre orange grove in Simi sixty years ago, so. Didn't seem like a bad thing at the time.
No.
Well, should we make that a P then?
For the single family?
No, no, not P.
For a single family?
Not P, see, if you're going to do something, I mean, if you're going to change it from what it's been, see...
Change it to CUP?
Yeah.
See, that's what, I believe that's what Joe was saying, that if, if we leave it as permitted and it comes as a DRP, then we have, then, essentially we have more control over it than if we had, did a CUP.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we want to leave it as a P.
Oh, okay.
Did I understand that correctly?
That, that's what I would suggest, yes.
Well, then, do, then should it be CUP in the other two zones?
Well, it already is.
Or should it be P? So that we have more control through a DRP process?
A CUP is more controlled than a DRP.
Yeah, I, yeah, thank you, Matt.
Oh, then it's backwards, okay, then I got it backwards.
Permitted is less control, permitted is allowed by right.
And you have findings you have to make and you can, I mean, that allows a lot of leeway, leeway in terms of judgment.
I stand corrected.
So let's, let's make single-family dwellings CUP in the ag zone?
Where you have more, yeah.
Well, maybe staff should, like, talk about this because since it was not allowed previously and given Matt's comments too, just come back with what you...
All right, we'll take a look at it.
If it's your best judgment.
Take a recommendation. Page thirteen, a little farther down. It used to say child daycare center and it's just changed to daycare center to allow for senior care. Adult daycare centers. All right with everybody?
I had just one quick question, um, under services, um, it says restaurant accessory, is that referring to like if somebody had a, let's say, a storage shed for, you know, extra materials?
I don't know, we run into some of that language on page twelve also where it says,
Yeah.
golf course, comma, accessory.
I have the golf course one marked too, I wasn't sure about the, it says golf course accessory. And I wasn't sure what they were referring to there, or could those two be combined, um?
I, typically accessory means just that, you typically don't list accessory. Because an accessory is part of the permitted use.
Yeah, so maybe we could...
Okay, so where it says golf course accessory, we'll delete, comma, space, accessory?
I might go through and, and delete the word accessory in most cases in the, in the table.
And then the same here with the restaurant one, right?
Correct, up above, studios.
I'm just not sure what it means.
Do we have a, do we have a limit that says accessory uses can't exceed, you know, ten percent of the floor area or anything like that?
It's nothing, not, not that I'm aware of, however, it's, you know, typically is, and I know people hate this, but the planners, we will look at the plan and make it determine, it's a judgment call in most cases. Ten percent is one thing, but is eleven percent okay? In the, in a particular case, is, is a bathroom, is a bathroom an accessory?
We've also recently... We've also recently litigated this exact issue and this conclusion that was made in that process was that accessory must be incidental to, and not greater in, in area or purpose than the primary use. And that's baked into the definition of accessory, which in the current code is, is incidental to. It doesn't have a numeric standard very much, but it does, it's a smidge more than a pure judgment call.
Correct, correct.
More of a functional definition.
So we can still strike it, but if somebody wants to come in and pull a permit to do an accessory one, they'll have to go through the process and has to be incidental to the primaries, okay?
Well, now, down on page thirteen, though, restaurant and restaurant accessory are...
That's the one I just brought up.
Have different, they have different permissions.
Well, or do they? That's, I was just saying...
At the moment, that's how the policy is structured. That an accessory restaurant is allowed as a permitted use in the three IR zones, but not a restaurant by itself. That's required as a CUP and is not allowed on IR one. Whether the wisdom of maintaining that choice, that's the question.
So what, I guess the question is then, what, for an example, what is a restaurant accessory that would be permitted in the three zones? As opposed to a restaurant?
I don't think anyone knows. It's, it's, um, as, as Mr. Summers said, he, he called it an accessory restaurant, but that's not what it says, it says a restaurant accessory. Which is what, is that a...
accessory structure incidental to a restaurant?
I think the issue is that throughout the code, throughout the rest of the table, it has thing, comma, accessory. So the comma's got to be implied. If you imply the comma, then it goes back to an accessory restaurant. Now, I still don't quite know what an accessory restaurant is.
Exactly.
Isn't that just a hotel?
Well, up on retail, general retail accessory.
Well, where we have a restaurant, we require a CUP, so if they make some kind of change, addition,
Correct.
a second story, whatever, they need to go through the CUP, so, it's fine.
So they should all...
Let's, um...
Yeah, I would strike it, I'd...
So just strike it, still, yeah?
Fine, yes.
And the IR one, two, and three is just the size of, of the parcel. IR one is twenty thousand, half an acre up to ten acres, ten acres to forty acres and over forty acres.
I, can I go back a minute? I'm not, unless we really define what a restaurant accessory is, I'm not sure we should strike it because maybe we're not thinking of something.
I agree, I don't understand what it is.
Well, I was asking...
I think we need to know what it is before we go, let's strike.
But I do think it's, I do think it's crazy that a restaurant is not allowed in the IR one zone, half an acre up to ten acres, but you can have a restaurant accessory.
Accessory there is permitted, yeah.
I, I would recommend just striking it, in my experience, that, that's meaningless.
Is it?
Okay, yeah, let's just give it a...
I, I've, I've written, I've written many, I've written many codes, I've, I've worked with many codes and I've never seen anything like that, so I, I don't know what it is. Not, not that I...
I haven't done a scan of the code to see if the term restaurant accessory
I'm looking at the definition.
occurs anywhere.
I'm looking at the definition.
They take an electronic scan, probably, but...
I'm looking at the definition of a restaurant, it's a pretty common definition. And, um, but then when you go back to accessory uses...
And accessory structures have their own definition.
Correct, so restaurant accessory, we could strike, I'd, I'd suggest.
And under a daycare center, I understand we're taking the child out, so it includes adult care centers.
Right.
And does that also include the special needs centers that we have here?
I would think so.
It's either for children or adults, right?
Okay, so it doesn't?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I did have one, one question, though.
A doggy.
Over on Quail Oaks, there is a group home. That has, that's a special protected class of structure. Because they have, they have...
Oh, the residential treatment center?
The res, it's a residential treatment center of some sort.
Evolve, evolve center, yeah.
Correct.
Do we need to put anything about that in here?
Those are single-family uses typically, um...
I'm sorry?
Is, is it a, is it a single-family home?
It's a single-family residence that was purchased by an organization that runs group homes.
And it goes back to what we were discussing earlier with ADUs. It's, it's, uh, the state law protects that as a single-family use, um, as long as it's, I believe, six beds?
Well, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, six, six residents or less is a protected class. Seven or more, you need a state license, we can separately regulate.
Get treated any differently from a single-family residence.
They're, they're living as one, as one unit.
Yeah, if they live together. As, as a housing unit.
Correct. Different from a boarding house where they're renting individual rooms and each person has a key to that room and rents that room.
Yep.
And, oh, and the last one is the SP, that's the special district? Now, the other categories that are in table two-six are defined in ten-two-six-oh-two on page ten. But SP is not. Where is that defined?
SP is a special housing overlay zone, that's defined in Article seven, Overlay Zoning Districts. Which defines two. The, uh, SP, well, to be fair, it's SPL, but it really means SP. And, um, and that's in ten-two-seven-oh, something, four, three, four, pardon me.
Ten-two-seven-oh-four, okay, well, could we, could we make a note to that effect so people will know to go look for it? Just add, add a note four, say, and put the note four right behind SP? And say, "Four, C..."
The uses don't match.
"OMC ten-two-point-seven-oh-four."
It, it, you know, on reflection, I think I was too hasty. The, yes, the SP zoning district is something different. It's defined in ten-two-six-oh-four, there's SP and SPL. The SPL is the affordable housing overlay that applies to the parcels listed in the SPL section and listed in the housing element. SP is defined in ten-two-six-oh-four, sub-C, as SP zoning district. Proposed development and new land uses within the SP zoning district shall be designed, established, and maintained in compliance with the standards provided in the applicable adopted specific plan. So it's a zoning district intended to accommodate specific plans.
Specific plan district, yeah, okay.
As opposed to...
And I don't, to my knowledge, we don't have any adopted specific plans.
We, we don't, we're, well, we do, we do have two specifically.
And the thoroughfare is an actually an overlay zoning district, not just, more than just a specific plan. In ten-two-seventeen, ten-two-seven-oh-three, the thoroughfare is an overlay zoning district.
That's the TCO?
Yeah, the TCO, the thoroughfare corridor overlay district. That's governed by ten-two-seven-oh-three, and that's also not on this table. Nor is it on the current zoning map, that's one of our zoning map problems.
So should we be adding that to the table?
Well, I think we, i- it, it sounds to me like it's a bigger issue, um, and we need to reevaluate. Specific plan, typically you, you wouldn't list the allowed uses of a specific plan in the zoning code. The specific plan creates its, its own, its own zoning code in essence. So, uh, typically on a...
Would, would, okay, so...
We wouldn't even have a category in the zoning.
Wouldn't have that column.
Would not have that column, typically.
Should we have a column for SPL?
No.
No.
Because the SPL only applies to a listed set of parcels. The same thing as, as a specific plan. The rest of the code, the rest of the table applies to all the parcels that are designated for that area. But i- it's a broader allowance. The SPL is a, is a closed list of parcels defined by the last housing element, which we're going to be re-updating, of course.
Okay, so the recommendation is that we drop that column in table two-six on page thirteen. Drop the column that says SP.
Here's, can I just interject for a moment here?
Go ahead, Lucas.
Specific plans are kind of interesting because it's really, and certainly within the context here, it's an extension to the zoning code, if you will. I'm of the mindset of including it, but not listing the uses, but referencing that specific plan so that you're aware that that specific plan does exist and that you need to go find that specific plan. Does that make sense? Rather than just assuming that these are all the zonings, zoning classifications and forgetting or even omitting the fact that there are, in fact, specific plans that exist with their own zoning classifications.
Especially if you're going to do that table.
That might be an ar, an argument for putting SPL in there as well.
Correct, we could, we could consider that even, not a column here, but under a separate table, two-dash-seven, for example.
Well, if we're going to make two-four, two-six into a, into a single table,
Explain it.
Then we could put a new note, yeah.
Yeah, you could do a note that says, "Further, the SP, SPL, and TCO zoning districts apply to the properties designated by those zones," something like that. Which would alert people who are reading this table,
Yep.
"Oh, I got to look at those three as well."
There's a good idea, okay, and then, then we can drop that column headed by SP because we'll have a note that calls it out.
And in that note, we would add that SP, all uses as permitted by the specific plan are allowed under the limits set by the specific plan. And for SPL, all uses is allowed in site ten-two-seven-oh-four, under the limits of ten-two-seven-oh-four, same for TCO. Site the, the standards that govern it.
Yeah, TCO has its own section of code, right?
Yeah, ten-two-seven-oh-three.
Yeah. What do you think, that makes sense?
Yeah, I know, I think it's a lot more clear and concise and, um, inclusive.
If we, if we wind up making the code easy to read...
We will have done.
So you're also going to look at, at all the places we have something accessory?
Correct.
Also, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Can I go?
Okay. And beyond that, we have ten-two-thirty-six, which is all the definitions. Are there changes in here that you're recommending?
Can I just go back? I, I'm sorry, I apologize for not being at that meeting, that earlier meeting. But, and I thought I listened to you guys, I did, but I forget exactly what happened. You know, I have some concerns about, um, manufacturing and processing uses because we've got some things in here listed that actually can deal with, um...
Say the page?
Oh, page five, attachment A, page five of fourteen. So, things like a dry cleaning plant, uh, I, I, they, there are uses that can involve, um, some fairly
Chemicals.
bad stuff, hazardous stuff. We have storage or disposal of hazardous materials as permitted uses. We have textiles and leather products that could be manufactured and the tanning of leather is, uh, typically, unless you're really green, typically involves some really bad stuff. Uh, was there any discussion of these, looking at these uses for what, whether or not they might, uh, they might, um...
There was no discussion on environmental impact.
Could, could staff look at that again?
I was gone that night.
Because, I mean, in particular, dry, dry cleaning plant, um, you know...
Yeah, textiles and leather.
I, I mean, some of them are green, but they could still use, um, some really bad dry cleaning stuff and...
Right, if you could do a might-not-want...
We, we, we can, fortunately...
A restriction on materials, maybe, certain...
Fortunately, the, the state, whether we trust the state or not, uh, has, has its own protections for...
I mean, a CUP, for example, with a dry cleaning, uh, I mean, I, I don't know that we're ever going to see that, but if somebody came in and they wanted to do that or they wanted to expand, we could review them under a CUP and we could ask them, "What kind of solvents are you using?" And we could regulate that as a part of the CUP, I think.
I'm not, I'm not sure how much we could, we could regulate if that, if they were using
If they're using, um...
solvents permitted, permitted by the state, uh, otherwise.
Well, then the question is...
Well, I would, I, then we would deny it. I mean, really, I think that...
Well, let's, let's go over to page twenty-eight, attachment B, page twenty-eight. There's your definition of textile and leather product.
But you know, Kathy, I, I think this was the night, I wasn't here the night we did this one, I think that was when I was gone in beginning of November. And I think...
I don't think any of the definition, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think this for personally, the question is, if, if there are storage of, or disposal of hazardous materials, do we even want that in our small community?
Exactly, yes.
That has, you know, the one highway coming in and out, I mean, there's just certain things that,
No way.
like a red flag, I would say not allow it.
I would, well, that, that would be my first.
But you may have already gone over this and I, that was, I believe, a night when I was...
I don't remember.
We did not, we, we, we touched, no, no, we just touched it very lightly.
Okay.
Even stone cutting, I mean, that could be really bad. And, and we're permitting it, I mean, at the very least, CUP.
Or you built-in measure, for certain things, like say the stone cutting, like a stone yard, there used to be one over in the industrial area where they sold stone and they, and other like building materials, like, you know, concrete, gravel. And they would cut some, but you could actually put in guidelines as far as, um, you know, dust particles that had to be in a closed area or...
It's just, it's just, it's just so open-ended that...
That's too open-ended.
Those three with note three under the M-one district.
Yeah.
If you look at note three, it says use not allowed within five hundred feet of a residential zoning district.
But to me, that's not enough, that's not enough.
And considering we have our air quality here in the valley and if some of these things aren't regulated,
I...
you, you know, then it's going into the effects of quality.
I don't know why, well, at the very, at the very least, if we don't want to delete them, I don't know why they would be permitted. That is, that is bad planning, it's not looking at it carefully enough. There could, they can have bad, bad stuff that they use and we could, um, with a CUP, we could review that.
Yeah, case in point.
The one in particular, um, storage or disposal of hazardous materials, those are two separate uses. So for example, uh, a body shop, auto body shop
They're going to have...
is storing a lot of hazardous materials.
This is, this is, this is stor, this is a use of what, this is the primary use. It's a storage and disposal use on a parcel. It's not, it's not an automotive...
Correct, it's not accessory going back to...
It's not incidental to... It's not incidental to-
It's not an automotive shop. We know, we know what they use, there's, they got the paints on the back.
I actually have, and, and on that one in particular, that's the one that gives me the least heartache to remove completely, to just say it's not permitted.
Storage or disposal of hazardous materials?
I would say strike it.
As a primary, as a primary-
As a primary use, as a primary use.
Is there anything in state law that says we can't do that, Matt?
There's lim, there are limits on our ability to limit the use of hazardous materials by certain facilities, like a-
Like an auto repair.
An auto, yeah, any kind of these businesses that are permitted.
Well, dry cleaners might have hazardous materials, yeah.
We, or a household, I mean, all of us have hazardous materials in our, under the sink and in the garage.
Recognize that.
But this is a sole purpose.
As a sole use, storage or disposal of hazardous materials, we can ban that.
I would say ban it.
All right.
And I don't think we have any in the city.
Strike it, strike that, baby. Right now.
Okay, now about how about-
Kathy brings up-
Stone and clay and pottery.
A, a great point and, and again, it's part of a bigger discussion of, of environmental impact and air and water quality and what's permitted and what's not. And maybe that's a bigger general plan conversation.
Well, I'm just-
But it's a good point you're making.
I'm just saying, when there, there's a possibility, a good possibility, that the materials that they're using are not what we really want to see in this community, at least with a conditional use permit, we do have a chance to review it. And I dare say that, that in many cases, you could be much more limiting and restrictive than anything the state says because you could provide-
Well, a case in point I'm thinking of is on a Roblar in Miners Oaks where the car wash is, where that land's totally toxic and it's never been cleaned-
Curious gas station?
Clean, mm, I think it's a car wash there across from Coffee Connection.
Why is it toxic because?
Well, because there was a car wash there and there were all sorts of chemicals that went into the ground and there's citrus trees growing there and when I'm sitting, you know, people go to pick the fruit and I walk across the street and say, "Don't pick that fruit because this has never been cleaned up and it's been sitting empty forever." And it's an environmental hazard over there. So you bring up a very good point of what we allow. I mean, we're not going to shut down our one car wash on Fox Street, but-
No, and they're following standards right now.
Yeah.
Well, all I ask is that staff look at that section. And I'm sorry I missed it, I'm sorry to go backwards.
No, thanks for bringing it up. It's, it's important.
Yeah, I don't remember this one.
Okay.
In, in my review, I did not go through definitions. Really, it was just a table and the definitions section was there to support our, our review of the tables. I'm sure we will go through that as we put the table together.
That may be more than we want to do tonight, but if we're going to bounce back, though, I'd like to go to page seven, where you noted auto sales and rental new vehicles and you asked, "Why are used vehicles prohibited? In fact, for that matter, why is it auto, not motor vehicle?"
I believe we did discuss that and we changed that and we just said vehicles.
Just vehicles?
We said, uh, sales and-
Vehicle sales and rental, you mean?
I believe that's what we said.
Okay.
Oh, I see here.
Vehicles, sales, and rental.
We also have accessory retail uses up at the top. I guess we're-
Didn't get rid of that one?
But just back to accessory.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Correct. What is that?
There's a reason I thought we got rid of that, but I guess not.
There might be something in the definitions, though, that I would come into your reading and see if there's something in there that doesn't make sense to you. And we'll look at it when we come back with-
That, that would be a great way to handle it.
In fact, the, if we're going to reformat the table, we need to take the text from those three sections and combine that somehow, if we're going to have a single table instead of three tables in three different sections.
Correct.
And I, I also request gun shops be at least a CUP and pet stores be at least a CUP, please?
We, we discussed gun shops at one meeting and we, the commission agreed to leave that as it was, however, we've got it open, we're discussing it, so, and pet stores, there was no, there was no discussion regarding pet stores.
I could have sworn on the gun shop, we said conditional use permit on that.
Where is that?
I would have to go back on my notes, I don't have, I didn't bring my-
As I recall, we were talking about making a conditional use, but, but we fell on, on leaving it alone, so it's a, a permitted use, it's, it's almost just a retail-
I could have swear we talked about a CUP there.
I cannot imagine we would say permitted.
We discussed this.
Why?
We want to know where it's located and we want to know what kind of guns they sell and are they going to sell AR fifteens or whatever the heck they are?
Is that illegal?
Well, I think we want to know and want to review it.
Right, I could have sworn we said it was, Bobby thought we did a strike, but I-
I thought we got rid of the gun shop.
I did too. Can, we could strike it, we don't have to have that allowed.
There's no requirement under current Second Amendment jurisprudence-
We have to have it?
-to allow gun shops in any given city. I use the phrase "current Second Amendment jurisprudence" because that often changes, although most litigation relates to gun safety ordinances and bans and things. There's no requirement to allow gun shops in a city. If you allow it, it could be permitted or conditionally permitted. If conditionally permitted, I'm not entirely sure we could say you can sell this kind of gun and not that kind of gun. But I think we, that might fall by the wayside of the current court's strong Second Amendment mindset, but outright banning all the gun shops, I think would be okay, because we're not banning possession, we can't touch that.
You could just delete it.
I think we should get rid of the gun shop.
Yeah, I think I have, I have one question, not that I'm saying I'm for it.
But I'd like to hear the planners' input on this one.
Coast to coast hardware, I don't know if they still do, but I believe-
I've been in a hundred communities and they don't allow guns, they don't have gun shops on their zoning list, I mean, like, come on.
And you, you look at it as a disturbance of some little use if somebody shows up.
If it is considered part of general retail, we don't need the line.
Correct, my, my, my previous experience in, in my previous city, we had a old school hardware store in downtown and they happened to have sold guns.
I think our hardware store does have guns.
Our hardware store, that's what I just said.
Plus, surplus used to sell rifles.
Surplus did too.
So, I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing that out there.
At the very least, a C-
Inconforming.
Yeah, at the very least, a CUP.
And they're not a gun shop.
Right.
No, it's ancillary to their-
Ancillary.
Incidental part of the business.
It's an accessory item.
It's a retail accessory.
But it's a general, it's a gen, it falls in general retail. So I, I wouldn't be opposed to taking the line out as long as it doesn't prevent people from selling rifles or handguns or whatever.
I'd suggest leaving it.
Apparently does not now.
Leaving it and deciding what we want to do with it.
Further discuss it later?
No, no, not further, not further, even today.
Or tonight, okay.
Tonight, come, come to some reasonable conclusion as to how we want to regulate gun shops in Ojai.
Then we better, we better define a gun shop.
Correct.
Because it's not a hardware store.
No, that's what we were saying earlier, that the hardware store that's selling it-
Ancillary.
The guns are ancillary to the main function of the store. But a gun shop is specifically selling guns and ammunition. Sole purpose.
What's the pleasure of the commission here?
Strike it.
Take gun shop out and not define it in the code.
Correct.
Uh, I, I just want some clarification. If, if we want to prohibit gun shops-
Don't permit it, just put it in and don't permit it.
Leave it in, leave it in and add a, add a dash in every section.
Yeah.
And define gun shop.
Correct, it should be left in as a use. Do not strike the use, allow the, leave the use in there, but strike it as a-
Makes sense.
Okay.
However, if we want to allow people to, to purchase a gun-
This, this does not then ban sales of guns incidental to other general retail like hardware.
Right, right. Like, so it's fine, coast to coast can continue doing what they're doing. This is just saying we don't want a gun store, a gun shop, that all they do is sell.
Always means including but not limited to firearms.
So if another store wants to open similar to Ojai surplus, that part of their-
That part of it.
-product is-
Is still legal.
It's case law that says the word "including" always means including but not limited to. Yeah.
No, if a new store opens-
A new store opens, like Ojai surplus was, that was a general-
To sell guns.
Oh, I see.
Or, and they happen to have a-
That's still legal.
Probably.
And I think the, the example, the, the nationwide example, I guess, would be Walmart, Dick's Sporting Goods.
Right.
Uh, those, those places.
True.
Bass Pro Shop, Big Five sells, sells rifles.
Right.
So those are not gun shops, they're sporting goods, but they happen to sell guns.
We're saying like ancillary is okay, but not sole purpose.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with putting dashes through gun shop, leaving the line in, but then we need to define gun shop as one where the primary line of business is firearms, ammunition, and accessories. Or words to that effect.
That's fine. That's fine. Pet stores? Do we want, do we want pet stores in Ojai?
Our, our, we have a pet store and I don't think anybody thinks it's dangerous.
Some communities, some communities have banned pet stores and some have-
Been to Walkers?
I probably would just ban them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But they're not selling puppies, they're just selling-
What's it gonna, this, this-
Chickens and ducks and stuff, yes.
Not, they're not full-time.
I've seen them in less than desirable conditions, but never mind that.
Old fish and hamsters and who knows?
They have some birds.
And once again, that's not their primary-
Well, if it were new, I would-
It's a page eight, Ray, it's the third line down.
Pet store.
Oh, pet stores.
I would recommend a CUP for them.
I would just caution against a, a, a CUP and, and for, for a certain use like that because the question then becomes what, on what grounds would we deny a CUP for a pet store?
No, no, no. You could regulate them and tell them they can't sell animals, they can't sell them.
We have a new pet store in town.
They can't sell-
They can't?
You could if you, if you wanted to, I mean, that would be my desire, I would, I wouldn't want to see a pet store selling pets.
There's pet store and pet supply.
What?
There's pet stores and there's pet supplies.
Pet supplies are selling food and-
But pet stores do sell fish and birds and stuff?
Well, you might, that might be fine, but maybe you don't want them to sell puppies.
I, I think we're getting a little too overbearing if we start telling people they can't sell puppies.
Yeah, I think that's pushing the limit there.
I'm willing to take my lumps.
I mean, they don't sell puppies, but-
Well, they're, they're puppies, they're puppies and they come from puppy mills and they have a lot of problems, they have diseases.
Well, we have a new pet store, they don't sell puppies.
I know, so if they're not, it's not a problem. Approved, stamped, approved, but, but-
If a new one opens up-
But a new one, if they were coming in-
A new one, they don't sell any of that.
We didn't have another one in addition to the existing.
What we have now, it's here, it's fine, it's here. I'm just saying, if we were to get a new, we were to get a new pet store, I'd want to look at it and say, you're not, whatever you, whatever you do, you can sell all the supplies you want, you could sell fish, you could, maybe birds are okay, I don't know, but puppies and kitties and coming from these pet mills is not a good idea. And anyway, that's where I'm coming from. Four to one, I understand.
No, I don't know enough about that industry to even weigh in.
And neither does, staff, staff doesn't have the, necessarily the resources to be
Right.
regulating and, and-
Like, where did you get your puppies from?
Well, I mean, it's not like we're going to be inundated with pet stores, but on the, on the rare, you know, maybe it would come in, I'm just saying, communities do, they're quite interested in regulating that kind of thing.
Well, you can always write a letter to the editor and get a following to get them to stop doing it, it might be simpler.
Would a CUP, no, would a CUP though, would that work for you if somebody came?
Yes.
Well, I wouldn't be opposed to a CUP.
I'm not sure that a CUP would accomplish commission a lot of state goals.
Correct, and I think-
There's no follow-up on that either.
I just want to, I just want to add, add something on, Mr. Summers just mentioned over my shoulder just now, the city of West Hollywood recently banned pet stores outright and they're not the first one, the other cities have, they have just banned pet stores, they, it does not-
They don't want live animals being sold.
We don't need to ban pet stores, but the selling, it's the selling of-
You can differentiate between pet supplies and-
Pet supplies are retail, are permitted retail use.
There you go.
Exactly, the West Hollywood ban is on sale of animals.
Okay.
Sale of supplies, food is not banned.
It's fine.
Okay.
And that's where you're going, I think.
That's where I'm coming from.
I think that's where you're coming from.
Oh, you're only opposed to certain animals.
Yeah, yeah.
Which makes it more complicated.
If you want to get specific, yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's the, it's the puppies and the kitties from these mills that are coming out and they're, they are, they do have health problems and they have, and they're not, they're raised in terrible conditions, it's a humane thing and-
Yeah, considering we have the new, the new pet store, we have Walkers to sell some farm animals.
What's the new pet store?
The Byvons, by-
They're waiting with the Hallmark ones, I've never seen them.
Near, near the hardware store that sells guns.
Right, right, so let me make my point, so we have that one selling smaller animals and we have Walkers and we have the Humane Society who are trying to rehome, we, that might be enough.
And it might be enough, yeah.
I, I might, I might want to point out that on, today, if Walkers or the other pet store wanted to start selling puppies, we wouldn't have any, any way to restrict that.
Have any basis to ban it.
Correct, it's a pet store and it's part of their-
Their existence.
What, what, what they allow, their existing.
Right.
We would allow them to sell puppies.
Well, they're not a pet store, they're a, what are they?
They're a feed store.
I think most people in this town are of the mentality that they know you don't buy a dog in a pet store.
Well, yes and no.
Well, a lot of them are out in Cincinnati.
I count two to three at le, at minimum, at maximum, so let's move on.
I'm with you.
I know, I've counted two.
I'm, I'm interested in this topic.
There's three.
Oh.
No, it's not that-
Yeah.
It's, I, I don't disagree with you.
Conversation about it.
I think it's complicated.
I would go for the CUP.
The question is, how would you condition a pet store?
Right.
To say, "It's okay to sell puppies and kitties, but not from certain places that we don't like."
Staff would-
Or you can't sell that type of animal?
And, and without creating a, a work program and for, for the city to, to regulate.
Right, just a ban on-
At that point, the suggestion would be, if the goal is, as I understand your goal, to prevent the puppy mill and the kitty mill sales, simply prohibit sale of cats and dogs. Staff doesn't have, I would think, the resources, absent counsel, reallocation of resources to figure out where the puppies are coming from. If you just ban sale of cats and-
Put it on the work list, okay, all right.
I mean, that would be one way to do it, is, is allow pet stores- I mean, that would be one way to do it, is, is allow pet stores-
Let's put it on the work list and talk about it some more.
But define pet stores to exclude sale of cats and dogs.
My thinking is, you know, we're very unlikely to see such a thing, but it's on the list, if they, if somebody comes in, we deal with it at that point. It's one, it's one project, it's, uh, see, I'll come in and write it, okay?
I'll do the hard work.
I promise.
You may wanna think of all, all four-leggeds. There's a lot of four-leggeds that are better.
So maybe there's a broad, maybe there's a broader-
Well, no, mammals, four-legged, guinea pigs, I mean, there's a lot of mills for four-legged mammals.
Geckos?
Aspect to this.
Four-legged pigs.
Maybe there's a broader aspect, okay.
Four-legged mammals.
Well, actually, maybe it's part of animal keeping.
Let's make it a work project.
A work project, okay.
Leave the table alone.
You can guide the process.
Okay, so we'll just-
I think what we, what we'll do is we'll, we'll see what West Hollywood did and what some of the other cities have done before we come back to that.
And bring it back and, yeah, we might be able to just-
It would seem reasonable.
Look at that as a reference.
Okay, any other changes that we saw? I think the, uh, the text sections attachment B to item three are something we should take as a reading assignment at home, but I don't think we have time to go through it tonight.
Can I just ask one more?
I see another thing.
Can I ask one more thing? Uh, I'll shut up here.
Page please.
Uh, page eight, again, um, the hotel, did we make that a CUP or is it all permitted still?
Hotel Motel Lodge, timeshare facility?
Hotel Motel Lodge, yeah.
I didn't think we changed anything there.
We did not, we did not touch that.
Was that the pleasure of the commission? I, I just cannot imagine why we would not require a CUP for a hotel.
We have a design review.
Yeah, but it's the aspects of the use we wanna look at.
Design review and parking sta- and parking standards.
Do we even wanna a hotel to go in on a certain site, do we want, what about the operations of, what about they, they have the rooftop deck, they have a s- a pool in the back that's next to a house, uh, apartments, I mean, um-
That all needs to be looked at, yeah.
I think that should be a CUP across the board.
DRP is discretionary and, and we can't add conditions of approval in the DRP.
We cannot?
We can.
You can.
Yeah, but you're not looking at the use, you're not looking at the use and we need to look at the use for a hotel, we're talking about, you know, a bunch of people coming in, parking cars, unlocking, uh, locked and unlocked at all times of the night. I ca- there is not a single town around here that you can name that has a, had, does not require a CUP for a hotel, it's just, we're the only people, we're the only ones that have permitted, come on in.
It's whatever the pleasure of the-
Yes, we are.
No, I didn't-
It's unheard of for a, a community to not require a CUP for a hotel.
That is my understanding for Ventura County, although I haven't done a comprehensive assessment.
What, what sort of conditions would you envision putting on a hotel?
Well, I would wanna look at the oper- it's at all, all of the uses that it has, is it having a dining room, is it having a rooftop deck with, with, uh, with the bar up there? How many rooms, how many people, where's the parking, where, uh, you know, a hotel can be very-
Parking's covered under a different part of the ordinance.
No, I'm talking about the use, the operational aspects of the, of the, of the hotel. I, I mean, it can really impact, and if it's next to a neighborhood, which our commercial area is, is pretty close to neighborhoods, I, I mean, I just, well, I would just-
No, what you're saying is valid.
I think that it needs to be-
I think it's valid too.
And if that's what Ventura's doing, there's a reason for it, so.
Ventura, City of Ventura?
We, we, we've kind of spoken a little bit here quietly.
No CUP in Ventura?
No, CUP, CUP would be appropriate for hotels, motels.
Yeah, good, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, yeah. Okay, I'm done.
Across the board?
Sure, you've got great stuff so far.
Wherever it says P, it's now CUP.
CUP.
Correct, that would be fine.
Um, God, there was one other one that I wanted to ask a question about. Oh, I did have one question if, on the same page, page eight of fourteen, attachment A. Um, and I know we had talked about, we'd looked at the restaurant cafe, restaurant cafe, outdoor dining. I thought we, in the M one, that we had said you could do the dining with the CUP, am I wrong on that?
No, no, that's correct, we, th- these have not been edited yet.
Oh.
So, the ones we're discussing are the ones that we-
Okay.
We're going back, but correct.
Okay.
Restaurants, we said CUP for all of those across the board.
Yeah, 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 that's what I thought and I was going, wait, didn't we do this? Okay, that was my goof down there, thank you.
And I think we said the same thing for alcohol sales.
CUP all the way across.
Okay. Okay, good.
All right, are there, are there more changes we wanna try to fold in to, to the land use tables tonight?
Maybe they should be corrected before we continue because we're kinda doing things twice and we've been at this for three and a half hours.
I think the next step would be to-
It's gonna come back as a reformatted table.
Correct, probably in spring.
And we'll take a look at it.
Um, because our next step is gonna, our next big thing is gonna be the animal keeping ordinance, that'll be January.
So you've got like the tobacco and babe shop.
CUP, I know, I-
Yeah, I just P, but may, does that mean we haven't done it yet and we're gonna get, you're gonna?
Don't remember.
Yeah, I, I thought we said CUP and I'm seeing P.
I think staff has, has accumulated some edits to the tables.
Okay, that we need to wait for.
That's correct.
That, that need to be filled in before we look at the tables again.
Okay, good. Okay.
What, was parking facilities in private and public changed, or is that all permitted across the board?
That, that was permitted, that was not changed.
Permitted.
All right, so we move on to, uh, so you, you've taken more notes and-
Yes.
In probably February, we'll be back with a reformatted table and text and take another look at the, at the big table.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's go on to, uh, item four then, priorities of planning commission and community development department.
As, as Mr. Seibert's giving that report, I'm going to, uh, pass out something from the California Office of Planning and Research regarding general plans.
Oh, good.
So we've reverced this, uh, this work plan and, uh, more specifically, this is really kind of a discussion piece for-
Thank you.
For your upcoming meeting, uh, joint meeting with the city council on, uh, January fourteenth. Uh, we went through this and really kind of looked at, at some of the items, um, that, that we've discussed here, as well as items that have been discussed in, in the past, and grouped those together, and that's kinda what you've got here, uh, for discussion tonight, as we move forward for the joint, joint meeting in, in, uh, January.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we expanded it more than what you had seen before, it was one pager before, we've kinda taken it a step further as you gear up here.
I have a quick question, and that is, um, we had requested an extra thirty minutes on that joint meeting, has there been any response for that?
There has been discussions on it, but I haven't gotten anything official at this point.
I suspect if we do, it'll be, you're lucky you're getting sixty minutes.
It's something to, I wouldn't call it that, but sixty minutes is really the, the, the mode in which they're operating under.
So it doesn't look likely, well, we don't know yet.
It's leaning towards no.
Oh, and that, well, that helps, okay.
Okay, so in the discussion here, we've got three items, creative work program, vision for affordable housing, and general plan update, and then some subtopics, I guess you'd say. Does that sound right?
Sounds good.
Is the commission still happy with that first list of three things?
I-
Still, it's gonna be, um-
Yeah, I was going to ask that we asked, add something, a very five, ten minutes max, and it was gonna be the Sustainable Living Research Initiative. But I, I'm throwing it-
Move that from the second page to the first page as item four?
Yeah, but I, you know, with, with one hour, it's pretty darn tight, but I'm throwing that out to my fellow planning commissioners, only, um, because I think it, it, there's a relationship potentially with the general plan update, um.
I, I agree, I'd like to discuss it, but I realistically, I don't see how it's gonna be a five or ten minute discussion with, with-
It's not even a discussion, it's more like a, a quick presentation.
But even the presentation, there's gonna be feedback, there's not just gonna be nodding heads.
I agree, I hear you. Okay.
And I don't know, is, is SLRI agendized for the city council on January fourteenth for their regular meeting?
I, I was making the request that we agenda it to the joint meeting, but-
I understand.
Oh, okay, you see what I'm saying.
So it's not, it's not currently on the agenda, he will, Ben will have the opportunity to do what he did tonight and make their presentation during public comment period.
At the joint meeting?
No.
Or the regular planning commission?
No.
The regular meeting?
At the regular city council.
Regular city council meeting.
So what if we-
But you have to agendize presentations as well.
He won't be presenting, he will be-
For him to get more than three minutes worth.
He will be subject to the three-minute limit or extra time as provided by the mayor.
So what if we request and split the difference and ask for an extra fifteen minutes at the joint meeting versus a half hour, and that fifteen minutes is, is where the SLRI can be discussed?
Well, I would look-
And split the difference, 'cause, 'cause honestly, I, I hear, I hear, I hear the predict, I, I hear the predictability of, of the council saying, no, we don't wanna give an extra half hour, I'm not cer- sure, certain that serves our relationship with, with the council, but it's their decision, but if we could ask for another fifteen and have them agree on that, I, I think that's a request we could do, given Ben's presentation today of the timelines of everything.
Don't you think that he should do a presentation, I mean, that's what they need?
It would back, well-
Well, there was, it was purposeful for him to be at, at the joint meeting as a precursor to, to being agendized for the-
We, yeah, we don't normally agendize presentations at the joint meetings.
Right, so that's not what I'm-
Yeah.
Kathy, you can explain it better.
Well, I'm not sure if I understand what you're saying either, so you're, you're-
I'm just saying, ask for fifteen minutes and, and-
An extension.
An ext- a fifteen-minute extension instead of thirty, possibly council will split that difference with us, and then Ben can go ahead and you can have that SLRI discussion, which you're saying will take five or ten minutes, and I think will take more like fifteen minutes.
And I'm looking at Lucas who-
Are you saying-
Something ready to tell us.
Are you saying Ben would do the presentation in those fifteen minutes?
I don't know what to call it, but Ben wanted to share something at the joint meeting, correct?
Well, we were requesting that, but I think staff has something to share with us.
So, uh, I can certainly take that forward as consideration to the city manager. Here's, here's my thought with, with, uh, SLRI.
Please, yeah.
Um, you're given the opportunity to, to really kinda dive into one or two or potentially three or four things, um, items that you're, that this commission is chopping at the bit, I haven't been here that long to understand fully what those items are, certainly, this one appears to be and, and is meriting itself for some discussion. To what degree, if it's a fifteen-minute presentation, does it stop there, or is it end up being another twenty to thirty-minute conversation afterwards, and then the rest of the items themselves end up getting pushed and kicked down, uh, the can gets kicked down the road. That's, that's kinda what I'm-
I, I was seeing five or ten minutes and then the five-minute discussion, so fifteen total.
I can certainly present that to the city manager and, and, and see where it goes.
And, and whether we-
And the mayor as well, obviously.
And whether we discuss the SLRI or not, we all felt that we needed an hour and a half to discuss even these three things. So I think an extra fifteen minutes, whether SLRI's a topic or not, would, would, um, um, support our relationship with council better, having that little bit of extra time.
You could certainly ask, well, if, if we're leaning no on thirty extra minutes, would fifteen be acceptable? And if you wanna make SLRI item four, but do them in that order, then that time limits it right there.
Right.
I, I think that Ben really needs to do a presentation to the city council in order for that to move forward.
And he needs to arrange that with the city council, not with us, yeah.
I think that's what needs to happen.
Yeah, it's a tough and, um, part of it had to do with potential funding for-
It's the timing.
Well, that's why he needs to do it quickly.
He wants to get the, he wants to get the city to sign something to collaborate on a grant proposal.
Right, so I think that taking it directly to the city council for a presentation.
Which requires a council approval.
Yeah, we, and we know that, that, yeah, the council would have happened.
Right, so, so at the joint meeting, I, I believe his intention was to share this, give them an overview, and then you have it agendized for the twenty-eight to which, because of the time constraints, to which time they can actually have a discussion about it to meet the deadline of the, of the potential funding from the grant.
Well, can he present that, can he send that to the city council?
Yes, that's not, yeah, I believe he's-
And then beforehand, as opposed to going-
What is, what is the item that you're holding there? Is that something that he shared with?
He passed it out today.
He needs an MOU, which would be the council jurisdiction, but-
And basically, but I-
But I just wanna, I just wanna make the distinction between the extra time and whether that extra time's used for SLRI or, RI or not, I would still rather have some extra time.
The extra fifteen minutes. And I just wanted to make a comment, um, as far as the SLRI, definitely the city council would be the one deciding if it would be agendized or not, and-
Had the MOU material.
They wouldn't, right, and they would also, if it did get agendized and they decided they wanna go through it, certainly if there was anything that needed to get modified or changed on this, it's not just showing up and saying, adopt this, it's, we understand the process that's required. I think the limit we had was that there potentially was funding to help with it.
In order, this says here, page one, in order to implement the SLRI, the city would adopt the necessary ordinances, which would be developed by an outside SLRI consultant group.
Oh, right, so basically-
This sounds like the city is paying someone to write ordinances.
I don't think the city, I don't think, mention was the city was gonna pay.
Who's asking to get on the agenda in January and then share it, then they can decide and work it out, but basically-
Yeah, I think-
Yeah, okay. I think that's probably right, this is, this is something I think for Ben to sort out with the city council.
But I wanted to ma- I personally was making the request to add it, but I do understand because of the time limit that it may not work, so if we can get the extra fifteen minutes and we could add it a mini, without a discussion, just a mini presentation, that would have been added.
I just don't know if he could even present the, I mean-
I don't think so either.
I think it's just not, it's not possible to know.
Send it in fifteen minutes?
I will defer to my fellow commissioners.
And, and, and again, I just wanna reiterate, even with these three topics-
It's gonna be tight.
An extra fifteen minutes is gonna be out.
Oh, I agree.
Okay.
I agree with that.
I think he needs to get, present to the city council, get onto their agenda directly, because I think this is just another step that's gonna defer it.
I think you're, you're understanding the, the, the steps in this process, here's what I, I, I feel like I need to just clarify to, to this commission, and that is the, the mayor or two council members have that ability to call, call items up for discussion and or to place items on the agenda.
We, yeah.
Um, I mean, we're having that discussion here.
I thought we heard early in the evening that members Wyrick and Fred Cena had already made that request.
They requested- They requested it be part of the joint meeting.
I don't know if that's true or not.
I'm not sure that that request has been communicated by those two members of council to the mayor, but that's a question to be solved between them, not any of this group.
Really?
Well, that's- That's-
Well- Right. I will say the city manager actually had contacted me and it's, knew about it, and I said that I would bring it up here, but, that, but I believe it was to come from planning commission, um, the request, and I completely agree and understand that, yes, the city council needs to have the two members and the mayor and they, they need to bring it forward and get it, not that we would tell them they had to do it, and I do understand that.
Yeah, point of order.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no.
And you can certainly, you know, recommend that they consider it, but-
Yeah, that's what it was more a recommendation.
Forcing it on their agenda is not within the power of anyone in this room.
No, no, and I understand, so basically it was a re- a recommendation to consider it would be the proper language, so.
I, I-
Okay?
Unless I heard wrong.
He did say that, but I'm not sure we're in a factual-
He did say, but we don't know if that's accurate.
Yes.
Okay.
Then, as, as our mayor has often heard to say, without objection, so ordered, we'll just make the suggestion that, that they entertain a presentation.
So, can we, let's get back to the discussion of our items on, for the joint meeting.
And, and if, if we're gonna go that way with SLRI, my feeling is this list of three is already more than we can cover, but it's a good list.
And I hear you on that, yeah.
It is a good list.
Uh-huh, and I don't even know if we'll get to all three of them.
Be nice to.
When you'll look at, yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we'll try.
The third one may not be hard, I think that Joe said there's a schedule in mind already, but the que- the crucial question for us is, what's the role of the planning commission? That's, it's, that's a short question, hard to tell how long the answer might be.
Correct.
I think we need to ask the question.
That's why I, I gave the commission a little bit of homework by giving them that, uh-
Yeah.
Uh, document from the state, uh, office of planning research on general plans, and give the, the commission a good understanding of, of why we do a general plan. Um, so, so they'll be, so the commission will be prepared for that discussion.
Not put too fine a point on it, it, do the city council members have this?
They will, they will.
All right, we done with item four then?
I think so.
Move along, New Year's Day, we're, uh, canceling the meeting here in deference to a plethora of college football games and potential hangovers throughout the city.
Yeah, nope, nobody will be calling in.
That's true.
Nobody will be knocking on the door.
Any questions of staff for, for what you see on a couple of pages here of item five, potential future items to come before the commission? Would like to get back to Title X code cleanup, it's been a couple of months now since- No, that, it's been a couple of months into it, that was the land use tables, you're right, you're right, yep.
Is the tree ordinance coming back to us?
No, we, we had made the request, and that's gonna be on our, uh, at the joint meeting, we have, didn't we have that on there on the joint meeting? We did have the tree, we have the creative work program, including the tree ordinance, yeah.
Tree ordinance, vehicle advice, and parking, and long-term vision, yeah, good, yep. All right, item six.
Well-
Oh, sorry?
The reason I mentioned the tree ordinance, if that's coming back to us and I, and I heard what you just said-
It's part of item one on the joint meeting list.
Right, is, um, Right, is, um, because I'd like to see that agendai, if it needs to be agendized for us, since Arbor Day comes up in March?
Well, you're talking about the Tree City USA as opposed to the tree ordinance.
Tree City USA thing, and the council's already taken that up at, at one meeting.
Yeah.
But we have to get.
Of what they did with it, I can't remember.
We have to get.
We're completing the application and, and we will be.
Yeah.
Creating an Arbor Day applica- or, um, Arbor Day proclamation.
There we go.
Okay.
But it's.
Got it.
As far as the ordinance goes, city council has to direct us if they want us. We're, we're, we're putting it out there that we're interested, and then they will direct us or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
That should be a general approach that we take anyway, is this something the council wants us to go work on?
Right.
Yeah, because I'd like to see a community, community-wide Tree USA, to, all that.
Right, and then we can, then we can agendize it as a public hearing for our meetings.
Yeah, given Ojai trees and.
Two separate things.
And all the Arbor Day stuff coming together.
Yeah, separate from the Tree City USA thing.
Right, the two different items.
Which is already being handled at the next level.
Thank you.
Okay, item six, we have just one report for tonight, Commissioner Corbin.
City council meeting.
Oh, I have a report too, though, but I'll bet you're listed.
Oh, from Complete Streets?
Was a remarkably short city council meeting for a city council meeting. Um, there were a number of presentations, one was by the Fire Safety Council, is working on a wildfire risk mitigation strategy, and they expect by January to have a roadmap to develop a plan. Um, there was approval for, uh, the Austin Pier Pond House on Foothill Road, known as Estelle Clark House, to receive historic status and, uh, Mills Act. Um, there was a comment by Jim about that, about the Mills Act, and I, I don't really know about the specifics of it. Um, I understand why it was developed, and in theory, I think it's great. Um, I don't, he said that it didn't amount to a whole lot in terms of taxes lost by the city, which I don't know if that's really true. I do know, um, that there are a number of people in town who are interested in getting their house through the Mills Act so they can save money on their taxes. I think the act is one of those great ideas in theory. Um, what happens in reality is some of the historic houses get purchased by people with a lot of money, who were going to do a really beautiful renovation to it anyway, and then they kind of get a little gravy on top of that if they apply. It, it's one of those things, like taking your tax base with you, where I think that if your income is above a certain amount, you shouldn't be eligible for that, quite frankly. So, you know, um, that's, that's just how I've always looked at it. Um, the discussions that I hear about it are, and I'm not saying this house is that, is that instance.
The Mills Act says you get a fifty percent break on your property taxes.
Correct.
What James Vega was talking about is the city's share of that.
Ah.
If you look at your property tax statement, you'll see there's very little of that money goes to the city. That's all he was saying was.
Okay.
The city won't lose much.
All right, well, I don't know, I don't know, I do know that our city taxes are quite high compared to the taxes that I paid on the house I owned in Ventura.
In fact, of.
About three times as much.
Of your property taxes, uh, I think it's about nine or 10 cents on the dollar comes back to the city.
Well, because there's also special assessments, and I don't know if those are admitted from that.
School district, fire, school district, fire district, um.
Or if you count that as coming back to the city, yes, then, then the majority.
I'm talking about what comes back directly to the city, is, is about 10 cents on the dollar.
Yeah.
Um, and then if we're talking about half of that being credited, the, the bottom line impact to the city is very small of the, of the.
That's what James was saying at the last meeting.
Okay.
That the city's share of the property tax.
Yeah.
And the point of the Mills Act, of course, is you're supposed to take that fifty percent and plow it back into the landmark.
Yeah, but.
Not saying that everybody does it.
Right, that isn't the way that it necessarily works.
Sort of your moral obligation.
I, I just, I, I just, it's one of those things that's always kind of bothered me, and since it came up, I had to put my two cents into that. Anyway, be that as it may, uh, the climate committee, uh, gave a report. They said that they felt that the way to go was a declaration, something that would change reality, that was action oriented. People on that committee would like to remain on the committee, I think the city council approved that. And they will move forward, they're planning to have, uh, two meetings a month with the five of them, um, and a longer quarterly meeting that will be open to the public, could go for a, a day, I mean, for eight hours, you know, a full day.
Like a workshop.
Yeah, like a workshop. Um, they feel that time is of the essence, they want to move forward and come up with some actual good working plans, and every city council approved that approach.
And they also requested, um, um, that at every council meeting, there's an agenda item that addresses the, the, um, climate mitigation, emergency response.
As they go along, yeah.
As they go along.
Right.
The council didn't really respond to that, but that was their request.
Right, um, and the, the other item they discussed was the outdoor dining encroachment permits and fees, and, um, city council approved designating the funds to be, um, put into the plaza maintenance fund instead of the general fund, and they voted against, uh, raising the fees at this point.
And then wasn't there something about, um, the extra five percent for.
Well, they talked about the fact Measure C is going to be on the ballot in the spring.
Right, and they want to see how that goes first, I think.
Great, thank you, and Kathy, you have a report on the MAC meeting.
Yeah, I had the, yeah, the MAC meeting, and there was one item on the agenda, and it was a review of a modification of the conditional use permit for Camp Ramah up off of Fairview. And basically, they, they went in wanting to, um, um, do this modification, but in the process, there were several ordinances that had gone into effect in the county that they now had to comply with on top of that. There was, they brought up the short-term rental, um, a scenic overlay, a dark sky overlay zone, a new outdoor events ordinance, and then they had to meet some CEQA baselines. But, um, basically, they originally had eighty-three point four five acres, and they purchased additional parcels, so now they're up to three hundred and forty-eight acres. And what they wanted to do, or what they're proposing is construction of some new structures and a reconfiguration of their reception area, um, which would include like a new trellis and a reconfiguration of their drop-off area.
Sounds like building permits.
Yeah, and then some estimated, um, earthwork, up to one thousand one hundred and ninety cubic yards of cut, and then there's fill. And then to legalize some structures that they had put in before, um, to do all that. But I'd say there were a lot of members of the public showed up, and the, and the biggest items that came up, um, issues that they came up were, they wanted to make sure that the hiking trails, there's hiking trails that the public presently can use that happened to be on this new purchase parcel that they had. They wanted to make sure that it was explicit in the CUP that there would still be, um, um, access, public access, access, exactly.
Would they buy property up all the way to Friends Packing House or something?
It actually includes.
The Cozy Dell Trail and stuff?
Yeah, exactly, so it's back there. Um, yeah, and so that they would be maintained, the two trails. So they asked for that to be, um, basically the MAC and the public made that request. And the other big issue was the noise.
Did they say when? And, um, is, when that project is going to the, is it going to planning commission?
So I just went to MAC, the MAC actually, um, made the recommendation that it move forward to the planning commission of the county.
Okay, legal planning commission, okay.
With the caveat that there'd be explicit language about, you know, codifying the Forest Service trails for access. And then the other real big issue was noise. And apparently, there was one woman that came, and she had literally over twenty years of complaints that she went down to the county and got. So, you know, apparently the sound travels where they're at, and, um, so all said and done.
How long has Camp Ramah been there? Was it there before she started complaining?
Yes. Oh, yeah, before they, they started to, but they do have new, um, new staff and new management, um, new people that are running it. And everybody, the members of the public felt confident that they were working with people that were listening to them, and they were going to, you know, follow through with everything. But, so the issues that they came up with was the noise amplification and then a dur- and duration. So they asked to do, um, further sound buffering, um, for events, especially at night, or they do have a, part of the permit was to have thirty-five events over the year. Um, they also made a request to not authorize the use of lasers, fireworks, upward lights at night. So that was one thing the, the MAC included, and let me see.
If the county has a dark sky ordinance and has a noise ordinance.
Well, they do have the. Yeah, well, they do.
That ought to cover it already.
Well, they do, and apparently they wanted to do more, and because of this thing with the sound traveling. So it looked like it was all going to get sorted out, but, um, let's see if there was anything else that I had on here. I mean, generally, that was it. I mean, I could go into more detail, we were there for a couple of hours discussing it, but I think that kind of covered it. And the MAC did, like I said, made the recommendation with some caveats to move it forward to the planning department, so.
Do you have a sustainability committee report? Do we have anything to share?
Well, I mean, the only thing we've been, I guess, is the SLRI, but we've already.
Yeah, we've been having a lot of discussion about that, and the California Resiliency Grant and the opportunity that that presents. It's a planning grant, not an implementation grant.
Right.
And it's, uh, it's, uh, it's supposed to be a replicable program that can be used around globally for communities affected by fire, drought, sea level rise.
Excessive heat.
Excessive heat, et cetera.
Fire, yeah.
Which is, which is why we've been focusing on that, and, uh, we've been talking about that for the last year, actually. So the request for proposals, uh, came out two weeks ago Monday, I think.
Yes.
So we're dr- drilling deeper into that.
This is the proposal that Ben Werner wants to work with the city on.
Yeah, the SLRI would be part of it.
That's the funding opportunity that he mentioned.
That's the funding opportunity, so it's like a climate, a planning climate adaptation, climate mitigation grant that we're looking at.
The, the, um, is it the state or this organization, but there's.
No, it's not, uh, it's not state funded, it's actually funded by, um, well, there's some businesses and nonprofits, um.
It's a two million dollar grant, and they're awarding one hundred to two hundred thousand dollars.
Planning grants.
Planning grants.
Okay.
Um, and then I, I have a couple, um, just public service announcements as we go into the holidays. So what is, um, on this Sunday, I believe it's the three.
Be the twenty-second, yeah.
On the twenty-second at three o'clock at Libby Park, is the Habad of Ho- Ojai having their Hanukkah celebration. So there'll be live music and refreshments and menorah lighting and like that at the park. Um, and that's always fun, a lot of people turn out, actually, like seventy-five hundred people usually.
That's a big crowd.
And, um.
Whole city.
I know, I was going to say.
What's that?
That's the whole city.
Can you get seventy-five hundred people into Libby Park?
Seventy-five to one hundred.
Oh, seventy-five.
We thought you said seventy-five hundred.
I thought, yeah, okay.
That is the population right now, yeah.
Very good.
And the other thi- and the other thing I want to mention, which kind of falls on the heels of, of the, um, of the, um, Climate Mitigation Emergency Committee, I always get those words mixed up, because I know that's not what it's called. But, you know, once a month, on the, um, first Monday of the month, is, is Green Drinks at Top Mountain Brewery on the corner of Montgomery and Ojai Avenue. And a lot of the, it is, it's.
What's that mean?
Well, because they're green topics, they're environmental ecological topics, and it's at a brewery, so it's drinks, so it's green drinks.
I see, okay.
Took me a while to figure that out, too.
It's an international organization, actually, they're doing all over the world.
Yeah, the green drinks happen all over the world.
Yeah.
So, but I wanted to bring it up because a lot of people, quite a few people that are on that climate, uh, uh, mitigation committee or have presented to city council have been guest speakers, have been, uh, special guest speakers. For instance, Greg Grant and Kathy Nolan, Susan Francina, uh, did a talk about Complete Streets and the ATP grant. Uh, Steve Colomay spoke about the air quality, uh, electrical microgrids was talked about, Fire Safe Council did, uh, did that. So they've all been, uh, uh, each talk is, is from five-thirty to seven usually, usually on the first Monday of every month. And then they're also, um, videoed, and there's a YouTube channel called Green Drinks Ojai, um, where each of the talks are uploaded. And, yeah, Kathy's correct, I'm the one that's, I video and edit them, I do them.
Yeah, he does the videos, I said, thank you, Ray.
And I created the YouTube channel because these, these conversations, um, and presentations are really informative, and they address a lot of the things that, um, uh, city leadership's been speaking about and the concerns of the community at this point.
It's open to the public and, um.
Yeah, it's totally open to the public.
Yeah, to anyone who wants to come. It's a good resource in our community.
Very good. Um, I think we're about done. I want to compliment my fellow commissioners again for delving as deeply into land use and the other topics that we've dealt with tonight as we have. I really appreciate the time that everybody's putting in and the passion that everybody's putting in, no kidding. We don't always agree on everything, but we make each other think about what we're talking about, and that's important. And with that, we stand adjourned at ten.